Well, good evening. It is now 6:30 PM and we are now going to at least begin with an invocation and we've asked Mr. Don Ash to bring our invocation today.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity, God, another rising of a sermon, another opportunity to come and praise and worship your name, God. Lord, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, God, be in the midst of this country, this state, and this nation, God, for, Lord, we are truly one nation under God. Lord, bless us through this meeting and guide us, God. Let the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, for you are our strength and our redeemer. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and welcome to tonight's regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we accept the agenda, I would like to make an announcement that the planning and zoning item, RZ 1914, General Holdings Unlimited, requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family residence for property located at 1496 Miller's Mill Road, has been withdrawn by the applicant. So at this time, there were some other items to be modified on the agenda and we'll vote for each of these separately. One of those was for to add a proclamation in recognition of June 10th of 2020. So at this time, if the floor is open for a motion to add that proclamation to the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote?
Uh, in fact.
Okay, we will move that item now to item 6A. We also have a, is there any other changes to the agenda? Commissioner Thomas, I saw your hand first and then we'll come to Clemmons and then Holmes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add to the agenda for a vote, Resolution Number 20, Henry County Police Advisory Commission.
Okay, alright, so there is a motion to add to the agenda item, a police advisory committee resolution. So there is a motion. And we'll count that as a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion about that? Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Is this gonna be for discussion or we will actually take action on it?
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, you made the motion, will you clarify the motion?
I really would like for this to be an item that we take action on in lieu of the fact that the country has so much unrest and that our citizens are looking for us as leaders to lead and make decisions. I really would like for us to move this from the discussion level to an item that we take action on tonight.
Okay, so it's clarification, it is made a motion to make action on it, it was a first and a second on that. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson, I just need to clarify, I forget you're on the phone due to medical issues, but we're glad to have you dial in as well. So Commissioner Wilson, any questions or comments? Okay, I can't hear Commissioner Wilson, but that's okay. Alright, so we've had a motion and a second, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, so four in favor. And you oppose, okay, you oppose adding it to the agenda and we want to make sure Commissioner Wilson. So anyways, it's four, four to one at this time. And what we'll do, we'll add that under the Board of Commissioners item and add that as 13B under the Board of Commissioners item. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to remove public hearing RZ 19-22, which is the Reservoir Group of McDonough, requesting a rezoning from RA to RS in District 2. This item we've moved before off of the agenda and again, I would like to remove it off the agenda until we've had an opportunity to meet with the residents in that area to make sure that whatever we approve is consistent with what the residents wants to see in that area.
Okay, so we'll consider that as a motion to remove item 12A as stated by Commissioner Clemmons, is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor of removing that from the agenda, please by signal. Okay, that was five to zero on that. And then I understand that there is another item regarding the District 2 Appointment to the Recreation Board, I'll look to Commissioner Clemmons to confirm that.
Yes, if it's not in the agenda, I want to make a motion that we add that to the agenda to add the resolution to remove one citizen from the Recreation Board and to add a new appointment to that board.
Okay, so we'll consider that as a motion to actually have a new appointment from District 2 to the Recreation Board, so that is a motion, is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Holmes, any further discussion? All in favor for that change? Okay, thank you. Okay, so are there any other suggested changes or additions to the agenda for today? Hearing none, stated none, so we're now accept a motion to actually add the June 10th proclamation, to actually add the advisory, a police advisory committee resolution to the discussion, to remove planning and zoning item RZ 1922 in District 2 regarding the property located at 1555 Chambers Road, and to also add a resolution regarding the District 2 Appointment to the Recreation Board. So the now, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda with those changes. We have a motion from Commissioner Barnes, I saw Commissioner Thomas raise his hand. Any further discussion? All in favor for these changes? Okay, thank you, that was five to zero. So yes, I'm seeing our county manager with an acknowledgement.
Chairman, just one clarification, I remember seeing some correspondence going back and forth regarding a hate bill crime, I mean hate bill, is that part of this conversation as well?
It's already on the agenda.
I apologize, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, are you there on the call?
Yes, I'm over the call.
Okay, alright, well just want to make sure that we can hear you clearly as we move proceeding to the agenda. So now that the agenda has been accepted with the modifications, we're now moving to the COVID-19 update and we invite Mr. Don Ash up for that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just want to provide a quarterly update to the COVID-19 situation that our county and our country is facing. As of June 16th, the cases in the state of Georgia for COVID-19 is 58,414, total deaths is 2,494, resulting in hospitalizations of 9,322, ICU hospitalizations of 2,043. Henry County makes up a part of District 4 Public Health, which is a 12-county region. For our region, we have 4,156 cases specifically to Henry County. We currently have 853 cases of COVID-19 resulting in 29 deaths. As a part of collection, which is very important for COVID-19, District 4 has collected in the last week 1,032 samples. Of those samples, 83 was collected at the Henry County site, which averaged 38 collections per day. It is our goal and our desire to continue to work with public health to extend testing of COVID throughout our county as we deal with it. So specific information is by zip code for Henry County. Henry County has COVID cases in Ellenwood totaling 27, City of Hampton, Hampton zip code 120, McDonough 379, Jonesboro 4, Lucas Grove 9, Stockbridge 199, the city of Rex 4. It's important also to note that the increase is 853 cases, but of that increase, 40 additional cases came out of the city of McDonough, that was the biggest growth. As we relate to our partners at Piedmont Henry Hospital, the current numbers they have, they're treating 12 total patients, eight that are currently in ICU and four, I'm sorry, eight in regular rooms, non-ICU, and four ICU patients, two patients pending under investigation. One of the things we talked about and a great concern for us COVID-19 has been related to long-term care facilities. In the city of, in Henry County, we have three facilities we deal with. Westbury and McDonough, we'll talk about it last, but Mount Carmel Personal Care of Hampton, 17 cases, four deaths, two staff members affected. Laurel Park of Stockbridge, 11 cases, one fatality, seven deaths. Westbury Nursing Home of McDonough, who employs a staff of 180, have zero cases, zero deaths, and one staff member affected. They've done an exceptional job of containing this COVID-19. One of the goals we've done as a part of our emergency management, our leadership team, we were able to acquire reusable cloth masks and we have deployed those out to critical stakeholders, which include our school system, our private schools, our water authority, all governments and court services. We also added our nursing facilities for these exceptional pieces of equipment. Currently, what we're doing now as a part of our management, our EMA, is we're working to develop a plan to continue to increase our PPE equipment. There has been some discussions about a possible second wave of COVID-19 that may affect our area in September. So we're being proactive as we seek out these needed resources, not only through our public health partners, but as private vendors as well. One of the last things I'll talk to you about tonight is, as we deal with COVID-19, our EMA team and our leadership team are working to develop vaccination plans. We do believe that we will get through this. We do believe that we will get a cure and it's our goal that as soon as that is available, we'll be prepared and ready to stand up those sites to get it out to our public. That's my report for you tonight, I'll be glad to take any questions you have for me.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to make the comment that your department has done an excellent job with the drive-through testing centers. I was fortunate to be part of that, going through the process to be checked and I, it's negative, but they did such an excellent job moving the cars along, maintaining the traffic, making sure that technology was working on time and timely fashion, and just thank you so much during this pandemic, the excellent job that I was able to witness that your department did, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, I will share with you that from day one of COVID-19, we've had a one Henry approach, all hazard approach, working with our municipal governments, our county leadership, our public safety team, just making sure that we break down jurisdictional lines and look out at Henry County as a whole, all 334 square miles, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, and then I have a comment.
Don, can you update us on what we're seeing in terms of hospital capacity?
Sure. Dr. Henson does join our call time to time on our, by week, our two multiple calls per week. The Piedmont system now has had a great, great reduction. Again, I told you, they had a total of 12 patients in the hospital system, at the peak they had 77. Of those 77, 47 was ICU ventilator beds.
Well, I've got two comments, mostly of commendation, I want to thank this board, again, for coming together to request the Department of Health to add some additional testing sites throughout the county and to also make it available to all of our citizens at no charge and no appointment schedule, and I will tell you that the Department of Health responded to that resolution that came forward, in addition to our Henry County team that actually came together to work with the Department of Health to make sure that everyone had transportation to get there if they wanted transportation, so that is good. The second thing is done, I do commend you and all of your team for what you're doing to help us to move forward along with our emergency management team EMS members, but I encourage our citizens, I want to say thank you to you all because there still seems to be in some areas around us, COVID-19 increasing of confirmed cases in surrounding areas, but I go back to the citizens and the businesses who, as I can look at you now, you're wearing your mask, you're practicing social distancing, and in order to prevent that second wave, that will definitely help us to stay in a low trend of confirmed cases. I also say that Dr. Obesanjeh, who is the Director of the Department of Health, says one other thing that we need to do as citizens is have a good diet, get exercise, and take care of ourselves so that we again will have a strong immune system if in fact there becomes another second wave, not just for COVID, but we've got to begin thinking about the flu season. But again, I want to commend Henry County for what we're seeing, our trend flattened, you know, pretty much over the last couple of months, over the last month or so, and we want to keep that going down even though we've seen a little uptick, but again, let's continue our social distancing and all of the measures recommended by the CDC. So thank you again.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Alright, appreciate that. Okay, thank you again, Mr. Ash, we'll now move into our proclamation regarding the National Home Ownership Month and we'll invite up Ms. Melissa Robinson to make that presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board.
Good evening.
Today, we have two proclamations. The first one reads, it's actually for the National Home Ownership Month, June 2020. Whereas in 1995, National Home Ownership Week began as a strategy of President William Clinton's administration to increase homeownership across the nation, and in 2002, President George W. Bush expanded the observance to the entire month of June. And whereas, National Home Ownership Month is observed as a time to celebrate the benefits that homeownership offers families, households, neighborhoods, and communities across America. Whereas, there are numerous key players helping first-time homebuyers make their dreams of homeownership come true from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Federal Housing Administration to local realtors, financial and housing counselors, and assistant programs such as the Community Development Block Grant and the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And whereas, during National Home Ownership Month, America celebrates the positive externalities that homeownership offers to families, neighborhoods, and communities across the country. And whereas, responsible homeownership is the key to building wealth and a strong middle class. And whereas, homeownership is an American value and the cornerstone of our economy. Now therefore be a proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, recognizing June 2020 as National Home Ownership Month, and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Henry County to abide by the letter and the spirit of the Fair Housing Law. This day, the 16th day of June 2020, Henry County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
And we thank you for that, are there pictures or anyone that we need to stand with or not?
I believe not, no.
Okay, alright, thank you.
The second proclamation is in recognition of June 2020. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States, dating back to June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Abraham Lincoln, when the Union soldiers, led by Major General Gordon Granger, landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas, Juneteenth is a time for reflection and acknowledgement of a period in American history that shaped and continues to influence our society, and as well as a time for rejoicing in the great strides African-Americans have made and continue to make. And whereas, it is a time for assessment, self-improvement, and for planning for the future, and its growing popularity signifies a level of maturity and progress in America. And whereas, Henry County acknowledges this shared history and commits itself to the principles of equity and is actively dedicated to diversity and inclusion initiatives in the community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that June 19th, 2020, is recognized as Juneteenth and encourages citizens to observe the day in a respectful and celebratory manner. The 16th day of June 2020, Henry County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
And we thank you for those, both of those proclamations, and I do in the midst of all that is going on, especially as we are approaching June 19th this week, I ask that our Commissioners please stand to be acknowledging this recognition of June 19th, to understand that this is a great time of reflection, but also to think about plans for our future. So I just ask that our Board of Commissioners please stand in honor of June 19th and Juneteenth. Thank you. Thank you Commissioners. As noted in the amendments to the agenda, we will now move into the next item, which is the District 2 Appointment to the Recreation Board. And at this time, we will acknowledge the fact that we are now requesting Mr. Alfred Williams to be the appointed individual for the District 2 Representative for the Recreation Board. So that is the presentation of the resolution, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve that appointment.
Uh, move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Thomas, any further discussion? Commissioner Wilson, any comments or question?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Commissioner Wilson, please state your vote.
And vote.
Okay, County Clerk, will you confirm that vote?
Yes, we had a motion to approve by Commissioner Clemmons, a second by Commissioner Thomas, and a unanimous vote, 600.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our next item, which is the County Manager Comments, and we invite up Ms. Sherry Matthews to come for the updates and other comments that she'd like to make.
Good evening again, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This evening, I am going to yield my County Manager comments twofold. The board or members of the board have asked for some updates regarding our senior services and specifically what we've done with our seniors as we've navigated through COVID-19. So I've asked Mr. Jonathan Penn to come and give a very brief update to the board regarding what's happening within our senior services. After Mr. Penn leaves, I know there's been a lot of conversation this evening, earlier this week and last week, regarding the state of our nation, and not only the state of our nation, but the state of our county. And I think it's very important for this board and the community to hear from our police chief. Chief Amerman has done a great job navigating through what's going on in our community and he's very passionate about making sure that the community understands the importance of not only community policing, but what efforts and what policies and procedures that they have in place and some of the steps that they're taking to make sure that we're doing the right thing when we're out on calls. And so I'm gonna allow Mr. Penn to come in first and then he'll be followed by Mr., or at least Chief Amerman, so thank you, Chair.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So, senior services, first I want to say thank you to the senior services team, they have done a phenomenal job during this time where we have to make adjustments, but continue to serve the community that has highest risk during COVID-19. And we've done a great job of doing that service and providing that service to them. Initially, if you may not be aware, we do meals for them at the senior centers where they can come in and get meals, but we couldn't, we couldn't do that because of COVID-19. They couldn't come in, they couldn't come in restaurant-style, sit down and talk to each other anymore, so we had to find out, find a different way to provide that need. And initially, we started doing drive-through service meals, and so that's where we would prepare the meals and then they could drive up at the rec center and then get those meals. As COVID continued to progress, we had to make some more changes and we stopped doing the drive-through meals and we started providing them a week's worth of frozen meals that they could prepare at their homes. So in addition to our meals on wheels and delivering those meals to them, we will also have individuals that we provide meals that would come normally to the centers to get those hot meals, we would provide them with a week's worth of frozen meals. So, and at that time, we also stopped our CNA services, which was where we would go into the homes and kind of tidy up their rooms and houses and clean and stuff like that, because we didn't want to infect them, so, or be infected, we wanted everyone to be safe. And so we stopped that service as well, but continued the meal service. On top of that, the staff went above and beyond where they would take household items to them if they needed them, toilet tissue, paper towels, whatever they needed, we wanted to make sure that we provided that need to them. We checked on them daily, we have a list of seniors that we would call, clients that we would call and check up them and do well checks and see how they're doing, and if they needed something, we would be there to do all that we could to provide that for them while staying safe. We also, our director, Ms. Diane Reed, had a bed-bound senior and he was having some issues and she was with him for most of that half of the day, making sure that he was taken care of during this time, so they went above and beyond to provide for the seniors. Now as we're, you know, things are being lifted, we brought back the drive-through meals, so you can go to the senior center and do the drive-through meals. We're also doing limited programming, where we're doing games and trivia via the phone. We're doing drive-in bingo, so they can come and do bingo in the parking lot. And then we're excited and looking forward to July 6th, when we plan to open up the senior centers with certain guidelines put in place. And so we're looking forward to that, we're excited about that, I know that staff can't wait. We also Monday started the CNAs going back into the homes, we provided them with several PPE so that they can be safe as well as the clients can be safe, and we're providing that need to them. I do have a 30-second clip that I would like to show you all. Hopefully, okay. This is just the seniors coming through the drive-through, getting their meals happy. Cool, and that's all I have.
Great, well are there any questions or comments from the board? I see Commissioner Thomas and I've got one as well, go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you so much for your services and thank you so much for what your team is doing. Would you mind just giving out your contact information and everything in case we have people watching and want to know how can I get involved and how can I get services for my parents or what they need to do to have your services available to them?
Yes, so I will give out my information, but I'm also going to give out our Director of Senior Services, Ms. Diane Reed's email address. My name is Jonathan Penn, my email address is jpenn@co.henry.ga.us. Ms. Diane Reed's email is dreed@co.henry.ga.us. And you can get in contact with her and she will get you all set up.
Are there any telephone numbers at all?
Yes, and I don't have it on me, I apologize, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but I can, we can put that up. You can definitely go to the website, and in the Senior Services tab, you'll be able to find all of our information, all of our numbers right there.
Okay. Okay, and my comments are, whilst during this COVID-19, was very concerned about those that were homebound, that did not have transportation to get to the stores, to get the tissues and the essential items. So again, thank you all for what you did, and again, that's why we're glad to hear the report today. And just let us know what more that we can do for our seniors here in Henry County.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, well thank you, Mr. Penn.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well we are now welcoming up our Chief Mark Ammerman, and also seems like our Deputy Police Chief, so we welcome you as well. So thank you.
Good evening Board, and Madam Chair. Just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to address all tonight, as we as a community and as a nation navigate what's going on, and I know our...
Your little sospoke.
I know our...
If you could speak into the mic, that would be great, so thank you.
I know our citizens are very concerned about what's going on, not only in our community, but the whole world today. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. In the past several weeks, we've had several peaceful demonstrations in Henry County. I just want to say, let it be known that Henry County respects and supports your First Amendment right to hold these protests. And truly, since I was a teenager, I've taken an oath to uphold these rights. When I joined the Army, then later became a Henry County Police Officer, so my entire life, I take this very, very seriously, these people's right, everybody's right, and their First Amendment rights, to be able to protest and have their voice heard. And we're gonna do everything we can to make sure their voices are heard. So I want to thank the community itself for having the trust and confidence in our Police Department to allow them to be able to do that with being safe. I want to say, Henry County, I think why it is, your Police Department is so good is because your officers are from Henry County. We are of the community and for the community. We drive on the same roads, we shop at the same stores, our kids go to the same schools, we attend the same churches. Your Police Department has the same concerns as you do as citizens of this county. For the last two and a half years since I've been Chief, we've worked hard to change the culture of Henry County, one from warrior to guardian. And what do I mean by that? Spending my time in the Army, and even in the Police Department, first coming up through Police Departments, the mentality is to be the warrior. You're there to occupy a space. That mindset has changed as our culture has changed. We've now become one of the guardian, we're now one of a protector. We're of the community and for the community, we're there to protect the community. And that's the mindset that we've worked hard to change. One of the first things I did, and it hasn't really, you treat the officers right, and they treat the citizens right. This hasn't been an earth-shattering thing for me to get accomplished, but just treating officers how they want to be treated, that means they treat the citizens how they want to be treated. You guys have done your part, you've gotten us raises, you've gotten us equipment that we much needed, you've taken care of us, and in turn, I see how the officers react. I can remember y'all commenting shortly after, after a few months of me taking over, about how the officers are, wow, they're all smiling now, and things are getting taken care of, and we're working in a positive direction. So that's one thing that we also worked on doing, changing that culture and how important I think it is. But I want you to know that we are committed to ensuring that community policing remains a priority by reaching out and being available to our citizens, not just during these trying times, but all the time. I recognize that we are all in this together, and acknowledge that more work needs to be done to demonstrate our commitment to our community. This can only be accomplished through partnerships, collaboration, and conversations. We look to have more engagement with our community, such as our officers even taking a few minutes to go throw a football around with neighborhood kids. You wouldn't have seen that in the past, that's not what our mindset was. But just taking time to do things as simple as that builds a relationship and builds a bond with the community, and that's something that we now encourage. Spending time and talking to HOAs, talking to Neighborhood Watches, trying to figure out how we can all be mentors in a place we call home. We will continue to educate ourselves in ways to serve our citizens, our businesses, and our visitors with integrity and compassion. When we see an opportunity to do things better, we act upon it, much in the way we've done in the area with dealing proactively and compassionately with the people who suffer from mental health issues, on the initiative we launched on how to de-escalate the use of force situations with words and not force. We will continue to look for ways to become more transparent, which was the initiative began with the body-worn cameras for all the officers that work in the street. As we move forward, I understand it's going to take the whole community to fix this problem. It's not just a Police Department problem, this is a community problem. We can't be everything for everybody at one time. This is going to take the whole community sitting down and figuring out what kind of Police Department they want, and it's going to take that dialogue to fix this issue.
Okay, well Deputy Chief Ireland, anything else you'd like to add to what the Chief has stated as well?
Couldn't have said it any better. Couldn't have said it any better.
All right, well we thank you for your leadership, but any questions or comments from this Board? Commissioner Clemmons.
Chief Ammerman, you and I had a discussion about having a community forum, where we would allow the community to ask questions about transparency in our Police Department, to talk about how do we bridge the gap between the community and the Police Department, and I know we've had the discussion. We were looking to do it at Village Park in District Five, and we talked about some dates, I think the final date that we came up was Tuesday, the 23rd. And I haven't had a chance to see if we have solidified that, but if we have, we need to try to get information out to the citizen. If that date is not good, pick a date.
I think I heard that date before, there are several dates that y'all have asked for different... I will make myself available to do whatever we need to do. I believe it's that important. I will put whatever needs to be put aside, so I can be available, and we can have that much-needed dialogue.
Right, and I know that in the community, there's been a lot of talk about the Dismann Morrow case and the case that happened in the City of McDonough, and I just want to make sure that people understand that the City of McDonough Police Department, that was a case that was in the City of McDonough, it was not Henry County Police Department. And when the Dismann Morrow case came down, you were not the chief at that time.
True.
And so I want us to give you an opportunity, and let's judge you based on the record that you leave while you're the chief, and that you will be responsible for what happens up under your watch, and we can only judge you and blame you, or uphold you for what happens on your watch, so thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and my comment kind of follows a little bit, can you, while you're here, explain more about what you're doing to make sure that we've got the best officers here on the force and the criterion that you're using? Because I've heard you speak specifically about, you know, making sure that we've got the people that we really do want here in Henry County to help address the culture that Henry County's Police Department is coming to.
And talk a little bit about how you can add diversity to the Police Department, and I think that's been a big issue.
Before I gave, my guys saw me looking at some notes, and recruiting guys came up to me and said, hey boss, you might want this. And it was hiring for the last three years. What it showed was, in the last three years, we hired, I want to say it was 44 white male officers, and it was 41 minority male officers. And for females, there was 10 white females, and there was 10 minority females. So what we're seeing is, as our county changes and becomes more diverse, our Police Department's changing with it. Even still, they had to tell me that. We're still trying to do the absolute best we can to hire the best people to serve this community. But as we're doing that and going through the vetting process, that's what was, that's how it worked out. It was actually almost a 50/50 split from what we're hiring on to the Police Department currently. Now as far as the backgrounds, what do we actually do to hire somebody? There's a lot that goes into, probably there's probably more that goes into hiring a police officer than any other position in the county. Once you do the application, then you have a pre-employment questionnaire packet. That's not just something on one piece of paper, it's actually 34 pages long. Then we have you do consent forms. If you're not willing to sign consents, so we can go to all your past employers and get your complete personnel file, if you're not willing to give us your criminal history, if you're not willing to give us your driver history, well, you're done right there. We have to have that total transparency. And of course, we have a physical agility test they have to do, they have an essay they have to write, they have to supply all their documents, their driver's license, social security card, birth certificate, their military records if they were, and we're only going to hire honorable discharges. Any school or college, all their transcripts. Then they finally get a face-to-face interview, then they have a polygraph examination, then they have a hiring board. Then they go through, if they pass all that, then they actually have a medical, physical, and also a psychological test before they move on to the next round. Then we start to do all the vetting, where you do the driver's history, your criminal history, we actually go to where they live, we do neighborhood canvases, we talk to the neighbors and see how they act in their neighborhood when they don't think anybody's watching. We do character references, we do previous employment. We also go through all their social media, we have them open it all up, so we can actually go through and see maybe where their mindset is, and how are they interacting, who their friends are on social media. Take a photograph, we run their fingerprints, and we do credit reports. Then if they get through all that, they also have to do a written exam, an entrance exam, and then maybe if that all works out, we'll give them an academy date. So there's a lot of vetting that goes into hiring a police officer. They just don't come down and, I know such-and-such, and get a job. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. I know there's been a lot of talk about making a national database. I was talking to my little brother, that's a cop in Jersey, New Jersey, apparently they've already done that for their state, their Attorney General did that, and you know, just talking with him, I'm in total agreement. That way you don't have bad cops jumping from place to place. That's an awesome deal. I know, we'll check their training, we'll check their status through posts. Georgia has an organization, it's Police Officers Training and Standard Counselor, that keeps track of certifications. And you can run them through there, but having a national database to have people come out from other states, I think that would be a great thing. There's nobody that wants good cops more than cops. We've seen what one bad action did to the whole country. My guys and the officers, they don't want to work with bad cops. They don't want them as partners, they don't want them backing each other up, they don't want to be in the field. You gotta remember, we all live here too, they could be stopping our kid, our parents, our grandparents, our neighbors, we don't want, we don't want bad cops here. So anything we can do to weed that out, Henry County Police Department wants it, and I truly believe the police as a profession want it. I think I forgot what your question was.
No, no, you've answered it, okay. I saw Commissioner Baum, and then I think Commissioner Thomas, I didn't know if Commissioner Holmes, okay, Commissioner Holmes, and I can't forget Commissioner Wilson. Okay, so Baum, Thomas, and then Holmes, and then we'll check in with Commissioner Wilson. Okay, Commissioner Baum?
Chief, would you speak about the Citizens Police Academy, and for our citizens that are here tonight, and a lot of people that are watching, if you'd kind of go through that, and how they could be involved, and get involved, and go through this Citizens Police Academy?
We probably started the Citizens Police Academy maybe 10 years ago. But it was one of the ways that we attempted to reach out to our community, to grab some of the community in and show them, it's an in-depth look at the Police Department. It's a two-hour class every Tuesday for 11 weeks. And it also spreads out a little bit outside the Police Department, because we want to see, because part of the things that they'll go through, so we'll go and touch on 911, we'll go and touch on the jail, we'll go and touch on the court system, but the majority of it is about the Police Department. As we welcome in and start to talk to them, we talk to them, we're telling them about, this is your Police Department, that's why you're here, that's why we want you to learn, and how much we appreciate them as citizens of Henry County actually coming in and learning about their Police Department. We take them through all the different sections of Police Department, Uniform Patrol Division, the detectives, the crime scene, the narcotics, the SWAT, all the motorcycle unit, all the special ops stuff, the K-9 unit, we give them overview of absolutely everything. And the guys will stay there longer than two hours and answer questions, because I know that, because I've been teaching it long enough where that's what I end up doing. But it really gives them some really great insight into what their Police Department's back. You as Commissioners, I challenge all of you to come through it if you haven't been through it yet. It also culminates with you actually being able to do a ride-along with a police officer to give you some insight, you get to see what he's doing every day, you're not just watching a video, you're getting to see and feel what he's feeling while you're riding in the car, and you hear that call go out of, maybe it's a possible shooting, or it's a domestic, and you get those butterflies in your stomach as you're driving to the call with the officer, wondering what's going to happen, and am I safe doing this? And believe it or not, the officers have the same kind of worries. You'll get a little taste of that when you get to go out there and do that. Because of COVID, we haven't been teaching it unfortunately, I'm hoping that we'll be able to start that again. Keep your eye on our Facebook and our website for when it's going to start up again. I don't think we've posted anything when we're thinking about doing it, but we're definitely behind because of the pandemic, and I hope to get it started. I think it's an awesome tool to help educate the community, what really what their Police Department's about.
All right, Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll go to Commissioner Holmes.
Okay. Good evening Chief and Deputy Chief. Thank you so much for the information you shared here with us today. I'm excited about it for a couple of reasons. You all have agreed to go live with me on Thursday night to educate the public about the Police Department, and some of the things that they do, and how they hire, and I'm looking forward to that discussion with you in public, and we will be on Facebook Live. So everyone, so please look on Facebook to get information about that. But I wanted to ask you a question, because I've had an extensive conversation with you, and in that conversation with you and our Deputy Manager and Manager, County Manager, you guys educated me on so many things that I didn't realize the Police Department does. And one of the things I ask, which we will be discussing later on, how do you feel about having a community review board work with you as leaders of the Police Department? So that everybody would know, would you give us your opinion on having such a board created by this Board of Commissioners?
I guess, hearing about it, I would need more insight. What does that actually mean? Or is it, what kind of authority do they have? Am I, is that going to be something the Police Department answers to them? Is the Commissioner still in charge overseeing them, or are they advocating to that? Is Brad and Sheri, is that something that, as a County Manager and Deputy County Manager, is that something they oversee? I'm not, what kind of training do they have? What are they actually reviewing? There'd be a lot of questions I would have, and what kind of role they would have, and what kind of authority they would have, and what we could do. I think, I know me and the Deputy County Manager and the County Manager have talked, especially as of late, yes, you know, we have Citizen Police Academy, we do have outreach programs, but to do much more defined and much larger, go out and get with community leaders, and get their insight, and what do they want to see, and how do they want their communities policed? And have that tough talk, and try to get their insight and how they feel. And a lot of it'll probably be us educating each other. It's creating an environment where we can sit down with the community, the community leaders and the Police Department, and have that conversation that seems so hard. I think putting a review board, as you called it, in front of that, is kind of putting the horse before the cart. Let's identify and see what we need to change first. Let's have that tough conversation first. I don't put anything just to say no, it's just, you asked that question, and where my head is going right now about it. I'm not above being viewed upon, looked at, having anything, transparency is always the best thing, I just, I'm not sure I understand what the focus is, or what the authority is, or it'd definitely be good to have a conversation about it. Or it'd definitely be good to have a conversation about it.
Okay, so you're open for a conversation about what this board will encompass and what it can do for the community?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I just don't want to add, is there going to be another layer of government that we have to jump through to get things accomplished? Or is this a focused group of collaboration, something to try to get issues identified and get problems solved? Or is this somebody just to look at it and, I don't know, I'm not sure I understand what the target is?
Well, thank you for the comments. One of the things I want to say that, as you stated, the country is in such an unrest position right now. The world is in a very unrest position right now. And everyone is looking for an opportunity to have dialogue to determine how best to work together with our officials, be it public officials, be it county commissioners, be it police department. But the focus now is on police departments. The whole goal would be to have someone here in Henry County to start that dialogue, to start talking about who we are, what we are, and how we can support our police department and how we can support best practices as we go forward. But thank you very much. I just wanted to get an idea of what you would think about such a group coming together. You're welcome to make comments as well, Deputy Chief, if you like.
No, that's fine if it's a, we just have to be careful with it. Because right now, we do have, we do have a system in place that has worked pretty well for us. Because that layer of review that we have right now, it goes through an immediate supervisor, let's say for use of force or for just a regular complaint from a citizen. It automatically goes through an immediate supervisor. It goes to a lieutenant, who's a shift leader. It goes to a captain, who's a precinct commander. It goes to a major, who's a division commander. Then it goes to the training department, who's in charge of all our training to make sure that whatever use of force was used is within guidelines. And then it comes to my office and then it goes to the chief's office. So there are several layers of review that either a complaint or a use of force is going to go through. And if it comes to the point that we see something that we think might be out of training or something, then that we can contact the district attorney's office. And they do have those individuals that work in their area that can also look at whether or not that use of force was within the scope of what it's supposed to be. So we do have a good system in place. And I think so far it seems to be working pretty well. So, but like the chief said, we're always open to any discussion that can involve the citizen. Because a lot of time when it does involve the citizen, it shows a transparency with the police department that we can deal with. And so, yeah, yes, we're open to it.
Well, it definitely sounds like you have a very good internal system. It's good to know that, that you have ways to check yourself. The checks and balances seem to be there internally. And I think what we're looking for and citizens are looking for is beyond your system. And it's not based upon your performance here. It's not at all. You guys have done an amazing job in Henry County, and I thank you for that. I just think the climate of where we are as a nation is pushing so many cities and so many counties to another layer external to you. So it won't be said again, well, you're checking yourself. You're evaluating yourself. You're doing it internally. You want that transparency, and that's one reason why these particular types of committees, commissions are being established around the whole world, basically. So thank you for your opinion, but I really do appreciate you telling me about your internal controls. They're very good.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll check in with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Holmes, I'm sorry.
I just want to simply say thank you to both of you over the last couple of years. I think you guys have been tremendous leaders for Henry County and our police force.
Commissioner Holmes, can you speak a little bit louder because I was just beginning to hear your thoughts?
Can you turn up the mic a little bit?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I simply want to just say thank to both of you. You've been tremendous leaders over the last couple of years for Henry County and our police force. You've been responsive. You've been professional. You've been quick to address any issues. And I know I can be a bear sometimes, as the other night when I called or sent you guys texts about 12 o'clock at night about a situation that turned out to be different than it was reported to me. So I guess what I want to say is things aren't always what they appear to be. And we've had a few instances of that. I think back a couple of years ago where we had an officer killed in a dentist's office. And everybody was quick to judge until we sat in his back room and watched the video. And I think we all broke down after watching that video and watching the officer die. So I think I think we have a great police force. We're going to have some bad apples. And when we have bad apples, we have to address them. We have to be proactive. We have to act. And I think we've done that in the past. So again, I just want to say thank you guys for everything you do. Thank you for your service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Wilson, any thoughts or comments?
Yes, and I may be repeating some of the comments that's been
Can we turn the volume up just a moment, Commissioner Wilson? If you can, we're going to try to get the volume up just a moment here so we can come through the microphone. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please proceed.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
I may be repeating some of the comments that's been voiced before because that's harder here. But I just want to thank the chief, deputy chief, and your whole entire command staff, your whole department for the job y'all are doing and continue, keep, continue the good work. And we just all appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And I'm going to kind of ask Commissioner Clemens to do what she did earlier during our public hearing, just to speak about where we've come from since in the last couple of years. I would encourage you all to please attend the police academy. It is educational. It also gives you an experience that you will probably never forget. I encourage you to go on a Friday night midnight shift almost, just so that you can experience some things. But we thank you for the police academy. I asked Commissioner Clemens to restate what she stated earlier. When we first began some years ago, our police officers were, we actually had about 30 or so vacancies. We couldn't even recruit people. And it was because we basically did not have market salaries. And we also had outdated equipment and so forth. And to be able to not only just get the supplies, but Chief, I just want to say thank you to you and Chief Deputy Mike Ireland, and even the officers when I'm out. Because I ask them, you know, what is it that they need? How are they doing? But I think the biggest thing that we're really proud of now is the culture that we're talking about. Because there's been so many comments about the Henry County Police Department some years ago and how people, you know, basically were just intimidated, felt threatened, felt like they were just not respected. But to see a police department that has heart now and not just what you do, but how you do it is important. I appreciate what you're doing for the peer reviews that you're all having to help with the mental, you know, challenges that you have to come through so that you're again in the right state because you all have families as well as you've stated. So Commissioner Clemens, again, I think you just articulated it so well. If you will just restate what you said during our public hearing about how far the support, not just of our police department, but all of our public safety teams has changed over the last couple of years.
And I will say to the citizens that we're not saying that our police department is perfect. I don't think there is one perfect individual that's walking this earth right now. And so our police department is not perfect. But what I can say is that I think that we have the leadership to make sure that if we have a bad apple and we point that bad apple out, there's no question about what's going to happen to the bad apples in our police department. And that's all we can ask of you, Chief Emmerman and our Deputy Chief Ireland. And I want to say that I have been a big advocate for the police department, as is every commissioner on this board. Because as I always say, we can't get anything done without the majority vote. But when, I know one of the biggest things that I was concerned about when I joined the board in 2017 was that the technology was just horrible. And when the police, I think there was an incident in Hampton that somebody was in a dentist's office and Hampton Police Department had to call Henry County out. You know, the bad thing about being down and having to go in the southern part of the county is that you guys, police, the radios didn't always pick up. And I was always afraid of, you know, what happens if an officer's down there? And as we look to protect our officers, we also have to also look to protect our citizens. So we now have better technology equipment. And if it's not working, we need to know that it's not working. We need to spend more money to make sure that you guys are equipped to call for backup. The next thing was the body cams. I know that when the body cams came before us, we talked about the body cams. And I made a statement even back then that the body cams were not just to protect our police officers, but it was to protect those citizens who had complaints against police officers. There's been multiple times that, you know, if something came up, it's easy to call Chief Emmer and say, did he have his body camera on? Because if you don't have your body camera on, you're going to be fired. Simple. We've got the body cameras. We've got the technologies. The pay was so extremely low. We were losing officers left and right. We were training them. Henry County became known as the training ground. We were training police officers and they were leaving to go to other communities with the good training that we had. And so now we're able to retain our officers. We've got officers, since Chief Emmerman is in place and Ireland, that are coming back to our Henry County Police Department. The cars, we had cars with no AC in it, cars that didn't have the technology inside of the cars. They were breaking down on the side of the street. And I talked about how embarrassing that was, but we have, this board has funded to make sure that our police officers have cars and even put a plan in place that the police cars don't get, you know, 3,000, 300,000 miles before we're trading them. And I think that the biggest thing was the incident that we had in Stockbridge where the mother was barricaded with her son and the boyfriend, and she was pregnant. And when we saw on the news, I saw Clayton County out there with their Bearcat. And I remember the very next meeting, I said, I don't ever want to see Clayton County having to come in to help our police force. We want to make sure that we have our own equipment. And so we got the Bearcat. So again, I say that there is no perfect police department. There is no perfect person. And the only thing that citizens of Henry County can ask is that you keep the crime down. I know that with our town hall meetings and commissioners, if you're not utilizing Chief Emmerman and his staff, every town hall meeting I have, I get the report of where is District 2 with crime? How do we look compared to District 1, 5, 4, and 3? And is the crime increasing? Is the crime going down? Are we staying the same? How do we compare with other jurisdictions around us? And Chief Emmerman, you've been able to provide that to me for every HOA meeting that I've had. And so we are keeping the crime down in Henry County. I don't want our officers afraid to act. I want them to be afraid to overreact. So I think that that training of keeping, making sure that excessive force is not being used. And if it is, what do we do? We got to make sure that our police officers are treated just like regular citizens. If it looks like there was a crime, fire them. We can deal with that with our attorney later. It's just like a regular citizens. They're going to be arrested first and then they got to prove themselves innocent. So our police officers need to know, you're going to have to be accountable for your actions. And we just thank you, and we hope that this board has helped to equip you guys, know that you mean a lot to us. We want you to protect this county. But we want you to do it and make sure that the citizens can trust our police department. And I think that's the big thing. Can we trust the leadership to make sure that everybody that falls up under him is good? And if not, let's get rid of them. Sure, what I hope I did what you wanted me to do.
Very great justice. I appreciate that. And I see Commissioner Barm has got his hands up. So thank you, Commissioner Clemens. Very well stated again.
Yeah, Chief, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. And it's some trying times for all of us in this country. And I know you want to do the right thing and you're providing good leadership. And also, I want to thank our county manager and our assistant county manager for their leadership as well. And I think Commissioner Clemens hits the nail on the head. I think about these town hall meetings, we can actually touch a lot more people with these town hall meetings, having them all over this county and address some of these issues. But just wanted to thank you and your staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, I didn't hear anything from Commissioner Wilson as well. So Chief, we thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief Ireland as well. And again, our prayers are continuing to be with all of us, especially the safety of you all and those that you are protecting as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the board and all the support.
Okay, thank you. So board, we will now move into the consent agenda items. So let me know if there's any one of those that you would like to remove for further discussion. The first consent agenda item is in District 2 regarding a resolution to approve a request for two new streetlights to an existing streetlight district for Oakland Station subdivision on Highway 81 West. The next consent agenda item is a resolution in Extension Services to approve a memorandum of understanding with the UGA Board of Regents regarding cooperative extension services and personnel. And then we've got two items from Senior Services. A resolution approving the FY 2021 contract with Georgia Department of Human Services, CSBG program to provide services for low-income senior adults in Henry County. And then also a resolution approving the FY 2021 sub-grant contract with Atlanta Regional Commission to provide community-based services for senior adults in Henry County. Under Transit, we have a resolution accepting the Federal Transit Administration CARES Act grant. And then under the Henry County Fire Department, we have two resolutions. One, accepting the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund allocation from the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $115,170. And then, of course, under the Fire Department, a resolution accepting a grant from the Georgia Association of Emergency Medical Services in the amount of $15,975 to purchase trauma equipment, supplies, and funding for EMS related to training for Henry County Fire Department and approval of the budget amendment. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution approving the adoption of the Green Community Certification Program. And under the Henry County Police Department Code Enforcement, we have a resolution regarding an abatement, approving an abatement removal of a public nuisance property located at 403 Rossa Road in McDonough, Georgia. Under Transportation Planning, we have a resolution approving the extension of GO, which is a Transit Capital Program Agreement for Park and Ride Facility. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution approving the bid award for overhead and ADA door maintenance as an annual contract. Again, under the Henry County Fire Department, we have a resolution awarding bid number 20-40 for the purchase of firefighter daily wear for the Henry County Fire Department. And the final resolution under the consent agenda is under Financial Services, which is a resolution approving the Regents Bank to serve as custodian and authorize the custodian schedule of fees for services as sales tax custodian for SPOS 5. So at this time, that lists the items under the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board wishes to remove for further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner Wilson, I did not hear anything from you. So at this time, we will open the floor for a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, Commissioner Wilson, will you please state your vote?
Approved.
Okay, so that is unanimous. County clerk, will you confirm the vote, please?
Commissioner Barm made a motion to approve. Commissioner Thomas seconded it. The motion was approved. 600 unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And if you could speak up because we could barely hear you, but thank you. Okay, we'll now move into the next item and we'll invite up Ms. Shannon Señor, our Community Development Director, to actually have a public hearing regarding a resolution approving the amendment to the Citizens Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and members of the board.
Good evening.
This evening, I do have the opportunity to present for you all an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Program Citizens Participation Plan. The participation plan outlines how Henry County will conduct and receive citizens' participation and public comment for the purpose of its Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a public hearing. The purpose of this amendment is to conform with the HUD waivers for the COVID-19. HUD did produce waivers, available waivers of the Community Planning and Development Grant Program and consolidated plan requirements for the prevention or to prevent spread of COVID-19 and to mitigate economic impacts caused by COVID-19. In review of this document, the county has found In review of this document, the county has found that waiver nine did directly apply to us and we have made amendments to the Citizens Participation Plan to ensure reasonable notice and opportunity to comment. Amendments to the Citizens Participation Plan will allow us to ensure effective utilization for the Community Development Department and create a subsection of the plan known as in the event of an emergency. This subsection allows for the county to conduct related public hearings and meetings virtually via conference calls or live web streaming in the event of a local, state, or federal-declared disaster or emergency where public places may be closed to the public or in-person participation may not be feasible or large gatherings may be considered a public Specific verbiage for this amendment is provided for your viewing. Specifically, we are stating that in the event of an emergency, as I stated, whether it be local, state, or federal, that we will provide notice through our local newspaper on our website. We will also ensure that documentation is provided for individuals to receive via email or US Postal should they request documentation in such a manner. Additionally, this will allow us to hold meetings virtually via the live stream or as we have done previously under COVID-19 via Zoom specifically. This is a public hearing, but I'm also complete with that presentation should you all have any questions.
Okay, before we open up for the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. We will begin the public hearing. So at this time, we'll allow any citizen wishing to speak regarding this resolution to please come and you will be granted three minutes to speak. So at this time, we welcome anyone to come and speak at this time.
Hello, board. Carl Swenson. Haven't been here in a while. As it pertains to the Chinese Wuhan virus, I would caution, use great caution when we proceed with these plans to control the masses, which is a lot of what this is all about. There's going to be outbreaks of that and other viruses. That's just the nature of the beast. We have, we have things going on all the time. But what I want you to consider is the, is the control factor that's being placed on the citizens and sometimes needlessly so, especially in the beginning of this. We did not know what we did not know. But now we know a lot more about it. We know where it's from and we know what, what to expect. And it's not what they told us originally. So I caution all of you to not exert any kind of overreaching controls on the people because we really don't need any more of that. It's going to be rough enough as it is for the people that we've got to try and get back to work and get some sort of normalcy. There's a lot of people out of work right now and this can really put a severe, severe hamper on their ability to find work again. So again, use great caution when you start talking about this Chinese Wuhan virus because it's not exactly what it's cooked up to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? And if so, please come forward now. Okay, seeing none. That does conclude our public hearing and now we will open the floor up for further discussion by the board, including any discussions regarding a motion. Okay, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, that's how Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? Commissioner Wilson, any questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote?
In favor.
Okay, County Clerk, will you confirm that vote, please?
Commissioner Clemens made a motion to approve. Commissioner Holmes seconded. The vote was unanimous, 600.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Señor.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will now move into our next public hearing under Public Works and this is a resolution authorizing the placement of a gate on the platted right-of-way between Hunter Road and the current end of pavement on Watson Road. We welcome up Mr. Burke Holter, our Public Works Director for that presentation.
Chair Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Home construction is an ongoing activity within the northwest portion of the Heron Bay subdivision. With this construction, some of the construction-related traffic is using Luella Road and Hunter Road for access to this site. Neither Luella Road nor Hunter Road are roadways intended to receive construction traffic as Luella Road is a narrow surface treatment road and Hunter Road is a dirt gravel road. Sinage has been placed on Trussell Road, Luella Road, and Hampton Locust Grove Road prohibiting construction traffic on these routes. District One Commissioner has requested further action to deter construction traffic using these roads. Henry County DOT is requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize the DOT to place a gate on the platted right-of-way between Hunter Road and Watson Circle. The left-hand, I have one more that's a little bit clearer. That's where the gate would be located. The gate would be located on Henry County's right-of-way. The gate's proposed to be locked with an approved lock for the Henry County Public Safety will have access to the gate so they can get into the northwest portion of Heron Bay. Just another illustration from Google showing where the map of the gate would be and same there. Anyone has any questions?
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner Wilson, any comments or questions?
I don't have any comments or questions, but I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion.
It's public.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so thank you for the reminder as well. So let's now enter into our public hearing. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, you will be granted three minutes to speak. So we ask that you please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak regarding this resolution, please come forward now. Seeing none, this does conclude our public hearing. And at this time, again, we will just make sure that you have any questions or comments from the board. Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. So Commissioner Wilson, if you will, again, state your motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Clemens, seconded by Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for us all to vote. Those in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All right, Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote, please?
In favor.
Okay, so County Clerk, will you please confirm the vote?
Commissioner Wilson made a motion to approve. Commissioner Clemens seconded. The vote was unanimous, 600.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burke Holter.
Thank you, board.
All right, we'll now invite up Mr. Toussaint Kirk, our Planting and Economic Development Cluster Leader, to come and discuss a resolution regarding a proposal for consultant services for an impact fee stay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. What we have before you today is a resolution to approve impact fee award. The current impact fee schedule was last adopted in 2003. The new study will update the current fee schedule and include roads and other transportation uses as part of the new fee schedule. There were three vendors that responded to the request for proposal and staff has recommended approval of the contract to Ross and Associates as they had the highest score.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding that presentation and the information that we received? Okay, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or discussion? Commissioner Wilson, any questions?
Vote for, in favor of, yes.
Okay, so we, there were no questions, I believe, but did you hear what he said?
I think he was making the voting at the end.
Oh, he was voting, okay. So no question. So now we've heard a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signal by raising your hand. And we just heard from Commissioner Wilson on the phone. So that was, okay, County Clerk, will you confirm that vote?
Commissioner Clemens made a motion to approve. Commissioner Thomas seconded. The vote was unanimous, 600.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Kirk. So we'll now move into our planning and zoning items. And again, item 12A regarding RZ 1922 in District Two regarding the property located at 155 Chambers Road was removed from the agenda. So we'll now move into the next item, which is in District Five, which is RZ 1925 KCG Development LLC requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to mixed use for properties located at 439 West Village Parkway and 41 Bowden Road. So at this time, we allow Mr. Kirk to continue in presenting this public hearing item.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. KCG Development is asking for rezoning from RA to MU, which is mixed use. This is an aerial map of the project location along Fairview and Bowden Road. This shows the current zoning map of the location, currently the cited zone RA. This is the future land use map that depicts the area going to mixed use development. That's outlined in the purple. And this is actually a conceptual plan that addresses a lot of the concerns that we had about this project. If you look at the lower left-hand corner, we see the people in the umbrellas sitting out front. That's the commercial component to this mixed use development. And actually, there will be two commercial components to this development as well. In January of this year, the Zoning Advisory Board did recommend denial of the application. Actually, the Commissioner did support that denial. At the time, the development was not up to standard. So to KCG's credit, they actually hired a new architect to address our concerns. So with the, with this conceptual site plan you see here, Planning and Zoning has recommended approval of this, recommended approval with the following conditions. These are 12 conditions. A few I'd like to highlight is number 10 there, access point to Bowden Road would be gated. Number 11, there's a, will be an eight-foot fence between the northern border that borders to the next-door neighbor. And item 12, there will be tenant commercial space in the lower two buildings of the development.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Again, this is a public hearing aspect. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we begin the public comments section? Okay, so at this time, we'll begin the public hearing aspect that we'll, at this time, those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, will be granted a total of 10 minutes collectively. And then again, after that, a time of 10 minutes will be granted to those who come and speak in opposition. So at this time, we welcome everyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant.
Do I have to do it towards me or? Okay. Good evening, Chair Wood and Board of Commissioners. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney with Parker Poe. And this evening, together with Carla Burke, who is Vice President of Acquisitions for the applicant, we represent the applicant. And before I start, I just want to commend you and your staff, first, for having your zoning board hearing last month by Zoom and having it a success because I practiced in a number of other jurisdictions. You all handled it exceptionally well, same for tonight. So thank you as someone who travels around the state and has to deal with all of this. I appreciate it. We appreciate staff's time and efforts with respect to this. Actually, I wanted to show the old one first, if that's okay. And I can do it. Just to give you a little bit of background, this applicant's sole business purpose is to build vibrant communities, offering an enhanced quality of life and a proud place for its residents to call home. KCG has a proven track record of accomplishing this goal in multiple states, including Georgia. And residents often affirm their satisfaction with these goals, calling their communities safe, clean, and home. So why Henry County? KCG was attracted to this property and to building multifamily on this property in Henry County because of its strong and growing employer base, proximity to Metro Atlanta. For this particular property, proximity to I-675, obviously the Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, and frankly, market demand. And you imagine Henry 2040 comprehensive plan that you adopted in October of 2018. You confirmed that in 2015, county housing stock was at 80% single-family, sorry, 86% single-family residential. Only 7% of your housing stock was in a 10-unit or more structure. This project addresses one of the goals of your comprehensive plan, which is to diversify your housing stock and build quality multifamily in the county, something that hasn't been done, we think, in more than 20 years. We appreciate the opportunity to present this application to you. The staff, staff described this property and I've put up what I'll call the old site plan. This is the site plan that the zoning advisory board saw in January and you already heard, gave us a recommendation of denial. After that hearing, we switched, we switched architects. We had more than one meeting with staff before, you know, pre-COVID on the phone, but also by Zoom. We had meetings with neighboring property owners. At the ZAB hearing in January, we had three folks speak against us. Two of them are immediate neighbors to the north, the Sebolds, who I'm sure you'll hear from this evening. And we listened. We took into account not only their concerns, but concerns raised by our District Commissioner and concerns raised, I have one actually I want to show, by neighbors. So there has been a lot of change in the site plan. The density has not changed. We're under 16 units per acre. The number of units has not changed. What has changed is a number of things with respect to the orientation and development of the buildings on the property. But I also want to just show you this. We were asked, both in that hearing and actually most recently yesterday morning, why we didn't buy the corner parcel at the corner of West Village Parkway and Bowden Road. And the reason we didn't buy it is, number one, it wasn't for sale. But number two, the county has road widening projects through its SPOS project, obviously for West Village Parkway. This is part of the county's road widening plans. The bulk of that corner parcel is going to be retention. That's highlighted in yellow. It's a detention pond and that's going to take up most of that corner parcel. So there's already a plan for that corner piece. It is not going to be, likely not going to be developed. And it's part of the reason we did not include it in our plan. So I wanted to highlight that for you. Just to give you, is that upside down? Okay, thanks. So I wanted to highlight that. We heard all the comments. This is our new site plan. Just to give you a few of the, of the things that we did, we moved buildings and reoriented them away from the northern property line, so the top of the site plan. That's our shared property line with our next-door neighbors, the Sebolds. We established more green space and buffering. We moved parking and drive aisles. So you'll see at the top right-hand corner, eastern side of the property, that's all green space now. Originally, that was a drive aisle and parking and building was much closer. We've reoriented most of the buildings. We have moved the amenities away from West Village Parkway back to the rear of the property. We have added fencing, as you saw from one of the conditions that Toussaint raised. Happy to do that as well. There was a security concern. We also were asked to eliminate the driveway on Bowden Road. We can't do that for life safety reasons. What we have done is agreed to gate that. We also will not put signage on Bowden Road, so it won't be the prominent entrance to the project. We have preservation of trees. We provide- be the prominent entrance to the project. We have preservation of trees. We provided the elevations, and that was after probably, I don't know, Commissioner Holmes could tell us, seven or eight versions of various elevations, all with an intent of a mix of materials, a mix of a visual roof line, all of the things to meet overlay district. We also importantly have added commercial space, although your zoning district allows only one use in a mixed-use category, which is a little strange. And that's what we had come in with originally. We did make that change. We do not require any variances. We meet every one of the ULDC requirements, all of them, no variances. I know you all received a lovely thick package yesterday by email. I am happy to go through every one of those. But, from a bottom-line standpoint, the neighbors engaged council, we were contacted at 3:45 on Friday afternoon, responded immediately, had calls with them yesterday as well, more than happy to work with our neighbors and be a good neighbor. We think we've done that with this revised site plan and these reoriented buildings. Staff can address notice, but I want you all to know, signs were posted, they've been posted and posted and posted, especially with COVID and delays. This was properly advertised in your newspaper. Postcards were mailed out and postmarked June 1st, among other postcards that were mailed and the like. But I do want to highlight a couple of things. The assessment for criteria, I've already said, you know, we comply with everything. I'm happy to answer any questions about those. Your staff's report has addressed every single one of those criteria. Staff has proposed 12 conditions. Those are all agreeable to the applicant. But I also just want to raise, there were a number of concerns with respect to floodplain and buffers, including an allegation without apparent engineering at all, that the county's FEMA maps were incorrect. We have engaged Kimley Horn. They've been on the project since before we filed the application in November. They did a topo map that was filed with the application per your requirements. All of the requirements, by the way, for filing, were met, including all of the niceties with respect to campaign disclosures by the property owner, by the applicant, by me. Those were included in the original application. But I just want to highlight a couple of things. There is floodplain on the top northwest corner of the property. The site plan is conceptual only. It does not represent a fully engineered plan. But, the applicant's intent and, of course, requirement is to meet all of the floodplain, stream buffering, and other requirements that the county has. All of those come after zoning. All of those requirements are dealt with through the permitting process. No portion of any of the buildings are proposed to be in floodplain. In fact, the proposed elevation of our site and the buildings is between eight feet and 36 feet above floodplain. And from an engineer's standpoint, and again, this is from Jessica Hoover with Kimley Horn, she says our high-density site, if we want to call it high-density, at 16 units per acre, is very minimal, with very little, if no, impact to the floodplain. We will have reinforced erosion control methods at the low side of the site to prevent sediment leaving and impacting stream, and otherwise will comply with all county requirements. I am more than happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Again, anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward now in favor. Thank you. So, at this time, we'll grant a total of 10 minutes for a collective group to speak in opposition. So, if you please come forward now. And again, be sensitive that there may be others that may be behind you. So, please, thank you. You may proceed, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Andrew Faulkner. I'm an attorney for Wiseman. I represent the Sebolds. My colleague, Casey Sturm, couldn't be here tonight. She's the author of that nice thick package you received yesterday. I've got my client here and I believe a few other folks. So, I'm going to briefly address what we believe are some of the deficiencies with the notice and overall with the zoning, and then I'm going to let them speak to the impact it has on them. So, to start with, yes, as everyone's likely aware, any decision on a rezoning application, the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with certain minimum procedural requirements set forth in the Georgia Zoning Procedures Law, as well as the county's own land use and zoning regulations, set forth in Henry County's Unified Land Development Code, which is Section 12.00.00. These minimum procedural requirements include adequate public notice and meaningful opportunity for public comment. In this case, I understand that there's a dispute over when notice was posted on the property. My clients, who live next door, who drive by it every day, contend that it wasn't posted until the 3rd, which is within the 15-day minimum. It's got, notice has to be posted between 45 and 15 days before the hearing. And if it was posted on the 3rd, then that didn't meet those requirements. I understand the county contends that it was posted on the 1st. Likewise, my clients received the notice, which they must receive because they're adjacent landowners, on the 3rd, that was postmarked on the 1st of June. However, the relevant code section in municipal code states that notice must be provided 15 days or more before. Doesn't say it must be placed in the mail, doesn't say that it must be sent. It says it must be provided 15 days in advance. If you put something in the mail on the 1st, you know, by definition, it's not going to get anywhere on the 1st unless it's being provided to the postman. Also, I contend that the COVID-19 situation is preventing meaningful comments to be made. The current stay-at-home order from the governor that was extended last Friday has elderly at-risk immunocompromised folks directed to stay at home. In a sense, the community would have to choose between their health and being hurt here. I understand the complications that exist in trying to have these meetings and broadcasting them online, and I understand that these meetings are broadcast, and that might provide a meaningful opportunity to listen. But that doesn't provide a meaningful opportunity to comment. There's no way for people listening to the hearing to provide any comment behind me. Quickly, I'll get into the, we believe there's an issue with the floodplain, the floodplain, there may have been a topical map that was provided. However, there wasn't a, any talk of the floodplain or the stream buffers, as the applicant stated, that there is a floodplain that's going to be on the detention pond that's shown there right now, the detention pond to comply with, you know, federal and state law will need to be moved. And that will undoubtedly affect the density of the property and the layout, how everything else is going to be restacked. Also, by not having the floodplain issue and the stream buffer issue on the application, it didn't provide meaningful notice to, it would be deficient also in the notice application because those that would be affected by the runoff wouldn't know that the stream buffer and the detention, and the floodplain would be an issue. It's actually, there's a case in Banks County, Harden versus Banks County. It's a 294 Georgia App 329. I don't believe it's in the letter, but it stands for the proposition that if there's a defective site plan with the application, that the zoning itself would be defective also. We, and I've, I'll give a copy of the letter. It's 13 pages long, so I can't go through it all right now to you all, so you can put it into the record. But we would ask that, first, that the board move this hearing till next month, so that the notice issues can be resolved, and that the floodplain issue can be resolved. And we're happy to discuss with the applicant and try to come to a resolution. We haven't, frankly, had much time to talk before today, but we're happy to talk going forward. If the county does, I mean, if the board does not want to move the vote and wants the vote today, we would ask that the application be denied. Now, I'll let other folks speak.
Thank you.
Can I hand these out to you guys?
You can get that to our county clerk. That would be great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandy Sebold, and I live at 53 Bowden Road, which is the property that's directly next to this development. My husband and I have been there for over 36 years, and I am opposed to this zoning change. On most of the paperwork, it says that this property is largely undeveloped. Not true. The property at 41 Bowden Road is developed, and it was developed to fit in with the rest of our neighborhood. They are relatively inexpensive ranch houses on larger lots. We're not a fancy expensive subdivision, but we are a community. The developer states that there is an incompatibility with neighboring developments, and I agree. Currently, there's nothing like that in this area. Even Commissioner Holmes, when he sent us an email, said that their current proposal does not fit the character of the area. And I don't think just shifting around some buildings is going to make, change the character of it. It's still an apartment complex, and apartments are problematic for the neighborhood. Precedents in Realtor.com have shown that there's an average drop of 13 to 14% in surrounding property values when apartments are introduced. When you have a transient community, you're dealing with crime and pollution. There's no vested interest in apartments. There's no sense of ownership, and often, no concern for the neighborhood. It's just something, someplace to live until you can afford to buy a house. There's 86% of the residents in Henry County are in single-family dwellings because that's what we want. We don't want apartments. It's not just an increase in traffic on Bowden Road. If you can look in the pictures that I gave you guys, this is right outside my bedroom window. 39 feet from my bedroom window is where they want to put a road. It is going to be the main road in and out. They're saying that off of West Village is going to be the main entrance. It's not. You won't be able to make a left turn. Everybody coming home in the evening will have to make a left turn, then another left turn, then another left turn, which will come right by my house to get into this apartment complex. That's going to be like Grand Central, going right by my bedroom window. By the developer's estimation, we're looking at an additional 300 cars, twice a day is 600 cars, and 680 people. And once again, in the developer's own words, they said that there's no reason that this property couldn't be developed as a subdivision. The impact of this development would be so completely devastating for my property, it would be the same as taking it from me. Any future sale of my property would be impossible. And unlike the subject property owners, this isn't profit-making for me. This is our home. We've been there 36 years and wanted to stay there. There would be no decent quality of life. It would be non-existent. And according to the Constitution, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. I haven't had that. I know that Commissioner Holmes feels very differently because of the upcoming Fairview development that's a couple miles up the road. I know that they really want to develop this area, but this isn't a good fit for our neighborhood. I just, I feel like this is not the right time. It's not the right setup for this development. They can find a better lot. There's a lot of large lots in Henry County. This is not a good fit, and I really request, for the sake of my home life, my family, that you deny this development.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward now.
Yes, I'm Paul Sebold, Sandy's husband. Like she said, we lived there for 36 and a half years. We moved down here from Philadelphia, so I know what high-density housing is. This apartment complex, it looks nice, but it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. West Village Parkway is going to be widened, and they're going to put a median there. So, you're not going to be able to come into this complex from Clayton County unless you go up to Bowden Road and either make a U-turn or go down to...
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. The time has expired. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So, that now concludes our public hearing. So, we now invite up Mr. Kirk and also the applicant, and then, of course, we're opening up for any comments or questions from the board. Okay, and I see Commissioner Holmes with his hand raised.
I just want to say that the initial plan that I saw didn't meet the requirements I would like to see for the Fairview Corridor. The Fairview Commercial Corridor was designated a town center before I got elected, and I've been in office 11 years. We've seen a lot of development in Fairview. There's a lot of demand. There's a lot of demand from various home developments and commercial developments that are looking at that particular street. Actually, had a meeting with some people that are looking to redevelop Rowan Road as well, and I think those guys are here tonight. I think this development is, like Mrs. Sebold said, it's a beautiful development. It meets the standards of the Highway Corridor. We've had a number of meetings with people in the community. I had the opportunity to post the development multiple times on Nextdoor and other social media outlets. I talked to various retailers and community members about the development. Since Piedmont has moved into our community, actually, sent the development over to the CEO for her approval, and she was all in support of the development. So, we, you know, we've covered all the bases. I want to thank KCG for going with all the changes. And we tried to meet the needs of the Sebolds. We put a gate up on Bowden Road, so there's no cut-through traffic. We're doing a privacy fence between the development and their property. KCG is also keeping, you know, keeping a lot of trees on the development, and it will be a green development as well. So, there's a lot of positive things that this project will bring to the community. And I believe this project will increase property values. We've already designated this whole area MU in the land use plan. Nitis isn't two or three miles away. It's less than a quarter of a mile walking distance from this particular development. So, I would never, I would never sponsor or support any development that I think would bring the property values down. I actually think that with Piedmont coming in, their primary care group, that you're going to see a number of medical groups in the future come into the area to support the primary care. So, I believe that whole corridor will eventually be zoned commercial, and you'll see office buildings, et cetera, along Fairview Road and that particular corridor. So, the people that live in that area, I think they're going to benefit in the future. They may not see it now, but I think it would be a great benefit for them in the future. So, I'm not exactly sure if anybody else has anything to say, but...
I just have a question. I just wanted to get a clarification about the notice about the zoning. If you will help clarify that from a staff standpoint, making sure that sufficient notice was given.
A picture of one of the signs that was posted at the location. The timestamp date on there is June 1st, and this depicts the two locations. They're actually marked in red. We had to sign at two different locations on the site as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson, any comments or questions?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. All right, seeing none, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or concerns? All in favor, please.
Excuse me, before you vote, is your motion to approve including the 12 conditions? I think you should clarify that.
Change one condition to increase the height of the privacy fence, and I think that's included in the resolution as well.
Okay, do we need to read those conditions so that there's clarity?
I don't think it's necessary that you read them, as long as they're the same conditions presented by staff. I think you can reference those conditions.
So, move to approve with the 12 conditions by staff.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that clarification. We had a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay. Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote?
Ma'am, I have to say, I was unable to hear all the hearings, so I'm not going to be able to pass it either way.
Okay. Zoe Upstein's pretty much based on unable to hear, so it does pass with the majority. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll now move into the next agenda. We'll now move into the next agenda item under Planning and Zoning. It's regarding the annexation of the City of Lovejoy in District Two and really a resolution to object to the annexation. And I'm showing Mr. Jock Stetter as the presenter, but I see Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rutiselle as the presenter as well. So if you will begin the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to present the staff report from Planning and Zoning. So this is regarding a proposed annexation of the subject property into the City of Lovejoy. This is for three hundred some-odd acres. The site plan that was included in the notice from the City of Lovejoy indicated that there is an associated request to rezone from the existing zoning districts, which are R.A., R2, and M1, two City of Lovejoy Planned Unit Development, to allow for the development of over eleven hundred dwelling units, which would consist of a mixture of single-family as well as townhouses. The future land use map shows a number of land use designations for the subject property, and they range from industrial to medium-density residential for a portion, and then for low-density residential for another portion of the subject property. When you have three hundred acres with over eleven hundred dwelling units, you're looking at a density for this subject property of over five dwelling units per acre net. This is not supported by the future land use map. On page three of the staff report, which is in your exhibits, it notice, it states that "No municipality may annex into an adjoining county in which the municipality is not already located unless agreed to by the county governing authority." Well, it also goes on to say that "Such annexation shall be deemed approved unless the county governing authority adopts a resolution opposing the annexation within thirty days." And so the staff report notes that the notice was received from the City of Lovejoy on May the eighteenth, and so this board would need to approve a resolution objecting within thirty days. One of the things that we're concerned about as far as planning and zoning, besides the fact that the future land use map doesn't support the applicant's request, is that there's no opportunity for this board to include mitigating zoning conditions, because it wouldn't come before the Board of Commissioners. It would become, it would come before the Lovejoy City Council, and there may be some negative fiscal impacts. This proposed development is so large that it triggers evaluation by the State of Georgia as a development of regional impact. And so the notice of decision would impact Henry County, because there are streets and roads that would be negatively impacted, and these are delineated in the notice of decision, but this board wouldn't have the opportunity to require that the developer complete the required improvements. Also, county staff has noted that there is stormwater already coming off of the subject property, which is currently used in part as a sod farm, and it floods North Still Drive. So there's no opportunity for us to mitigate that as well, and if we don't, then the applicant, when they come in for development, would use the current development as a baseline, which, again, we've noted is already failing. The school board letter that would be associated with this zoning request indicates over twenty-two hundred new students, requiring ninety-one new classrooms, and we have no opportunity for mitigating conditions. And also, the county water authority has noted that coordination will be required with them to provide water and sewer. Also, Henry County has certain, within our ULDC, we've got certain zoning requirements, certain development standards, namely our Highway Corridor Overlay District. And there's no guarantee that the City of Lovejoy would require development standards as high as our Highway Corridor Overlay District. We would note that portions of this property are already zoned, M1, R2, and R.A., and so these portions of the subject property could be zoned under the current zoning. We're not aware of any existing agreement with the City of Lovejoy, and our county attorney can provide more information, but it's our understanding that if the City of Lovejoy annexes into Henry County, that then a new service delivery strategy will be required. Now, at this point, I would like to turn it over to our county attorney for more information.
So, good evening. To follow up on what you've heard already, so when any city annexes property, they're required, obviously, to give us notice of that annexation, and in some circumstances, we have the opportunity to object. If it's one of the four cities already located within the county, our opportunity to object is limited to land use decisions, and we occasionally hear those notices of annexations, and we object sometimes, sometimes we don't. It's a little bit different when a city annexes property across a county line. So when a city annexes across a property across a county line for the first time, which is, which would be the case in this instance, with the first time they annex, you have a greater opportunity to object. Your opportunity to object is sort of all-encompassing. And frankly, among us, I would suggest it ought to be that way for every annexation. But Georgia law grants you the opportunity, opportunity to object for a wide variety of reasons, including land use, and also including just the impact on the county. And I've prepared for you, and you've all got a resolution before you that provides such an objection. And what will happen after this objection is we'll notify the City of Lovejoy, assuming the board approves the objection. The ball would then be in the city's court and the developer's court, and they would have the option to file suit, to take our objections to a court, and a court would rule whether our objections are valid or not valid. So the bases for the objections, which you're permitted to make, are the following: whether the annexation is reasonable for the long-range economic and overall well-being of the county, school districts, and municipalities affected by the annexation; next, whether the health, safety, and welfare of property owners and citizens of the county, municipalities, and the area proposed to be annexed will be negatively affected by the annexation; thirdly, whether the proposed annexation has any negative fiscal impact on the county, school districts, and other municipalities that are not mitigated by an agreement, which we don't have an agreement; and finally, we should consider the interests of the property owners seeking annexation. So what I have done is provided for you, beginning on page two of the resolution, a list of the objections and the concerns that we've identified, which are relatively general in language, but they encompass all of the concerns we can identify when you annex new property into a new city. And I'm not going to read them all, but I am going to summarize briefly what they say. First of all, that the annexation is not reasonable for the long-range economic and overall well-being of the county, and the reasons for that is we engage in long-term planning by updating and adopting our comprehensive plan. This property, if annexed into the city, will not be covered by our comprehensive plan. You won't be able to plan for the things that happen on this property, because you'll have no control over what happens on this property. So as it is today, we plan infrastructure. We plan, even the school board looks to our comprehensive plan, and the water authority looks to our comprehensive plan to make decisions about where infrastructure should go. And the reason for that is it's presumed that you're going to roughly follow your comprehensive plan when you make zoning decisions. They are under no obligation. If this property is annexed, the city is under no obligation to comply with, look at, pay any attention to our comprehensive plan. Next, we plan how we deliver services based on our comprehensive plan. That's sort of the guideline about where even things like police, fire, things, services like that. Again, our plan becomes meaningless when this property leaves our jurisdiction. Likewise, the Board of Education participates in our planning process. They help us in formulating our comprehensive land use plan. Again, it's out the window if we lose control over the property. As a typical, typically, cities develop at higher density, which is reflected by this plan. I mean, that's the nature of a city. They tend to be higher density. The City of Lovejoy, I can't speak in absolute terms, but the City of Lovejoy, like most other cities in sort of suburban and ex-urban areas, provides services at a lower level than the county does, as opposed to a higher level. So what we're looking at is we will probably be called upon to fill gaps in services to the city, and again, we have no control over things like density. We have no control over receiving impact fee revenues, things like that. Likewise, we have the Highway Overlay District. This property would not need to comply with our Highway Overlay District, and it could be like a missing tooth in the mouth. You have all this, you know, all of our highway overlay districts, and you got one, this gap, this one gap in the middle that's not required to comply with it. We may be able to, we may be called upon to invest a substantial amount of time, energy, and, most importantly, money, to provide the types of services that we provide throughout the county, even to all of our cities: fire services, EMS services, animal control, things like that. And again, we have no opportunity to control or have a say in what happens on this property. It's our belief that the City of Lovejoy does not have its own fire department, so we'll be called upon to provide fire service. Now, that seems like that's not a big deal, because we're already providing fire service to this area, but we're not providing fire service to eleven hundred houses. So that, you know, you're looking at the possibility of having to really increase fire services to deal with this property. That could have an impact on our ISO ratings. That could affect my insurance rates, your insurance rates, all of our insurance rates. We can't plan for fire stations. We don't know when to put a fire station, where to put a fire station, because we're not part of the decision-making process on this development. Likewise, our emergency management services, E-911, things like that, we're going to have to figure out how E-911 works. If that development is, happens, somebody picks up the phone and calls 911, who answers? Does Henry County answer? Does Lovejoy answer? Does Clayton County answer? Who responds? Does Henry County respond? Does Lovejoy respond? Does Clayton County respond? Do we all respond? We're going to have to work that out. There could be problems, and I'm sure all of you have probably heard this: citizens sometimes don't know if they're in a city or not. And I expect, if you're in Henry County and you may or may not be in a city, it's not that big of a difference. I mean, I still know I can come here and complain about my property taxes. I still know where to go for most of my services. You take a city that's, I don't know what the percentage is, ninety percent located in Clayton County, ten percent located in Henry County, there's no magic. The air doesn't look any different. The dirt doesn't look any different. There's not a big white line painted on the ground. They don't, these folks aren't going to know where to go when they have a concern. Do they come here? Do they go to Clayton County? Do they go Lovejoy? Where do they go? How do they do it? And we should be concerned about the residents that'll be on that property. We have no way of knowing what future growth will be. We don't even know for sure that's the plan that'll get approved. So we have no way to plan for, to prepare for, that future growth, future growth. We will not receive any permitting fees, licensing fees, impact fees, or anything like that on that property, and we will be called upon to provide some service to that property. Our local option sales tax, which we'll be renegotiating fairly soon, could be impacted by this. Our SPOLOs distributions in the future could be impacted by this. Our T-SPOLOs distributions in the future could be impacted by this. Property tax revenue in the future could be impacted by this. We don't know if they will be for certain, but they certainly could be. So because of all of those things, my recommendation is that we assert an objection, and we try to either work through those problems with the applicant and with the City of Lovejoy, or we let a court sort this out. Because there are problems, we will suffer, the county will suffer issues with respect to this. Now, in a perfect, if it works out well, we, if it works out well, perhaps we can negotiate these things just like we do with all of the cities. You know, we negotiate service delivery with all of the cities. We negotiate how taxes are handled with all of the cities: fire service, police service, animal control, all of those things, all of those services we provide, all of those things I've raised here, we work through with the cities. The only difference would be, you know, you've got, you've got a lot in common with your counterparts in Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Stockbridge. You will have less in common, from a geographic standpoint and a jurisdictional standpoint, with your counterparts in Lovejoy. So it may become a little more difficult to work through those things, but that's really what this process is about. This process is about giving us the opportunity to say, wait a minute, we got some problems we need to resolve them. And either they come to us, and we have a conversation, and we resolve them, or if we're unable to do so, a superior court judge will resolve them. So my recommendation is we adopt the objective, we approve the resolution of objecting. Today is really the only opportunity that you have. As you heard, you received the notice on May eighteenth. We're out of time. We need to adopt that ordinance immediately, or this resolution immediately. We'll provide it to the city, and that'll start the ball rolling on the, on the resolution process.
Okay, well, thank you. So we've heard the presentation from our county attorney and also Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rutiselle. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Yeah, Commissioner Clemmons?
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that this three hundred acres, as it sits right now, is already zoned, R1, R2, R.A., and the future land use map calls for it to be low-density and high-density. And whether it's in the City of Lovejoy or whether it's not in the City of Lovejoy, all of those things that our county attorney has talked about is issues that we're going to have to address regardless. We've got to address the fact that they can build this subdivision right now without having to rezone it based on it being R1, R2, R.A., and also the future land use map allowing them to have the medium density on this property. So I want to object to this today, but I don't want us to go to sleep on this. Patrick, I would like to get the school board to the table, Lovejoy to the table, because if it develops, and I think, I mean, I talked to Patrick in Tucson a little bit about this. This is something that will take ten years, probably, minimum, to develop this whole three hundred acres, but we need to plan today for ten years from now, and so I want us to be in position to go ahead and set this subdivision up for ten years from now. I want us to be talking about now, how do we make sure that the school board is looking at the land over there to build a school for twenty-two hundred more students? So I think that we, we, right now, and also look at if Lovejoy has a police department that's right there, what does it look like if we have a service delivery strategy with them, having our chief at the table, to see what does it look like if they can get to them quicker than we can if we don't have a police department? So I want to object to this today, but I want to also ask that we put a committee together with our police department, our school board, City of Lovejoy, the developers, the county, and everybody, and start to plan for this subdivision that we can't stop from coming. It's coming. It's already zoned, R1, R2, R.A., and so what I would like to put in the record is to ask the developers to do, or the landowners, or whoever's doing this project, is if we don't do anything, how many houses is it going to bring? If we don't do anything, what does it look like? Because right now, they can start building. And so I don't know that it'll be eleven hundred homes, but it might be six hundred. You know, I don't know, but I would like to see that, and then that way, we can bring everybody to the table, including Lovejoy, to see how do we work together, and if it is, if it's going to help us. I know that I've already asked Patrick, okay, if they build eleven hundred homes, can we have an additional millage rate on that property? How do we make sure that we can benefit? And the answer has been yes. We can add another millage rate, because we're going to need different services over there. Can we add more millage rate to help with the school system over there? The answer has been yes, but that's what we're going to have to do. We need to start playing, uh, planning for the future of this project.
And let me, let me clarify one thing. I'm not sure the Board of Education could add any millage rate, because they're max debt. We could not add any taxes for education purposes. I would also point out, there is a portion of this property that's zoned industrial today. So I have no idea how many houses would go on there, but you could also have more industrial property developed, you know, another, another one of those projects out there, which the board has had some resistance to.
Right. I think we have a great staff, and we need to look at, what does this look like now? And go ahead and try, this is a great board to look at this project, to see... And go ahead and try, this is a great board to look at this project, to see how can we plan for this project, you know, down the line? And so I really want us to take an opportunity to look at this project and begin to plan for what this project looks like in the future.
So if this board approves this resolution, I will, obviously, I'll notify the city and the city attorney, and I did receive a call, I believe it was yesterday, from a representative of the property owner, who expects an objection and sort of voiced their, their willingness to sit at the table and work as well. So we'll certainly reach out to all of those people and start that conversation immediately at the staff level, and start identifying the issues that we need to identify and that your staff needs to identify. And then we'll, you know, update the commissioners and work through that process.
Yeah.
And also, what service delivery strategies, what we'd be able to implement, and how do we bridge the gap between us and City of Lovejoy if, if, if we have to depend on them and have, I know parts of it is already touching Lovejoy.
Right.
So we definitely need to deal with that. So this is definitely not a 100%, we have to deny it today, but we do need to sit at the table with them to talk about, how do we get some help with this project?
Okay, and my thoughts on, on this project is I definitely object to it, just because I think that, if anything, we just wanna continue to shape what is best for Henry County, and I'm glad to hear that we really to, willing to sit down with all of the stakeholders to really shape something like this. And Commissioner Clemens, you've done a good job making sure that we had good quality development, so anything that we can do as a board, please let us know that, because I think that's very important as well.
Patrick, has there ever been a precedence that if a city, if a property annex is in, that the county still retains the building, the building and zoning?
Well, there are, there are cities that utilize the county for those purposes, but the law can't require that. So, but, but it has happened, I mean, we used to do those services for, Sherry may know, we used to do those services, all the building and development stuff. I think we did them for Hampton, and for Locust Grove, and for Stockbridge for years. So there have been instances where that hap, that has happened, but, you know, that's, ultimately, once a piece of property is in a city, the, the city can contract with the county to provide some of those services, but we, they cannot allow us to zone for them.
Right.
So we would not be, there's, there's virtually no circumstance where we could control the development standards on that property. But there could be circumstances that we're, we're inspecting homes, and we're inspecting development, and things like that.
Well, what about, I remember there was a project with McDonough that we allowed them to zone, to annex into the city, but they couldn't change the requirements of the zoning for a period of time.
Right.
So if we take this project and we go ahead and set the project up the way it should be, we're talking probably 10 to 15 years of developing this property, and we say that until the last home is built, you know, but there's a service delivery strategy. So I think that there's a lot of conversation that we can have with the city and the property owners to try to develop it, but there's a lot of things that I'm thinking about that we possibly can do, but I definitely want the county to be involved in setting the project up, phasing the project, setting millage rates, and everything that we can do to set up to make sure that not only is it not, because even if it doesn't go into City of Lovejoy, we gotta deal with this, because it's gonna be a subdivision. So I wanna definitely, I'll get our hands on it immediately and start thinking about it. So I just, I said that because I see the staff nodding their head, start thinking about how we can do this, and how we can do this development where it's phased, where it truly takes the 10 to 15 years that it's going to take, but it doesn't put a big impact on the county without us recouping for millage rates and other fees. So to that, I would make, well, I'm waiting on your word.
Yeah, let me see if there are any other questions or comments from the board. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you have any questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, here and none, we're now open for a motion regarding this resolution to object to the annexation.
I move to object to the annexation of the property by the City of Lovejoy.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Barham, so seconded by Commissioner Barham. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor of the objection, please signify raising your hand. Commissioner Wilson, will you please state your vote?
In five.
Okay, so county clerk, will you confirm the vote, please?
Commissioner Clemens moved to object. Commissioner Barham seconded. The motion was approved, 501, with Commissioner Holmes not present during the vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we thank you for that presentation, and more to come on that. We're now moving to our Board of Commissioners segment of the, of the agenda, and we have the first item, which is a resolution in support of a hate crime legislation, and we're gonna ask Mr. Jock Stetter to present that, please.
Bear with me one second, if you would.
And while we're waiting, I'll look over to the county clerk. How many public comments do we have registered tonight?
Two.
Two, okay. All right, board, I guess we can press on through. Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought I could, I thought I could display the current draft. You should all have the current draft of this resolution.
Yeah.
I wanted to be able to put it on the screen, so.
You wanna put it?
So as you, as you're all certainly aware, over the past several weeks, there's been a lot of talk about, a lot of talk about racially motivated crimes against persons, and you've also probably heard, over and over and over again, the need in Georgia for a hate crimes bill. Georgia is one of four states in this country that does not have a state-level hate crimes bill. The federal government has one, but it only applies to federal crimes, and it only applies when, yeah, the Attorney General's office decides to bring it. And there is, there are pending in the legislature right now, two different versions of a hate crimes bill. And what a hate crimes bill is, it almost sounds silly saying, you know, describing what it is, but it's, it's basically a law that enhances penalties for crimes if those crimes are motivated by gender, race, sexual orientation, physical disability, mental disability, one of those things. If it's a crime that's motivated by hatred or animosity towards a group, as opposed to just general crime, we enhance the penalties. So Georgia has had a number of instances lately where it just seems obvious to everybody that hate crime has occurred, and there's nothing Georgia can do about it. So there are pending today in the legislature, two versions of hate bills. One in the House, or one out of the House, which I believe is House Bill 426, the other one out of the Senate, which is Senate Bill 166. The, the House Bill 426 has actually passed the House, has crossed over to the Senate, and like everything else in the legislature, it stopped when COVID hit. So there is a potential, there's a lot of public pressure, a lot of public outcry, for that bill to get picked up again. And I don't wanna bore you with the details of the bill, but the short ver, the short version of that bill is that it would, it would provide for enhanced penalties, enhanced sentences, if it is proven that a crime, essentially an assault-type crime, a physical violence crime, is motivated by, I'm gonna make sure I read the entire list that's in the resolution, if it's motivated by these factors right here, the victim's race, color, religion, national orientation, sexual orientation, gender, or mental disability, should also have physical disability, and those are actually an individual's perceived race, color, nationality, and those things. So even if, even if the victim of the crime doesn't have a mental disability, but they're perceived to have a mental disability, if convicted, and if the jury is convinced that that was the motivation for the crime, it would enhance the penalties. So what we're asking you to do today is adopt a resolution urging the General Assembly and your local delegation to take up that hate crimes bill and pass it, so Georgia can join the, most of the rest of the states in having a state-level hate crimes bill.
Okay, well, we thank you for that review of the proposed resolution. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, so now the floor is open for a motion for approval. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments? Commissioner Wilson, any comments?
No more.
Okay, so all those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote?
In five.
Okay, county clerk, will you confirm the vote, please?
Commissioner Clemens to approve. Commissioner Thomas, second. Thank you.
Okay, well, we do have the item, which was 13B, that was amended to the agenda regarding a police advisory committee. And so at this time, we'll allow our county attorney to make that presentation regarding that proposed resolution.
I'm not gonna be able to, I'm gonna, I thought I was gonna be able to present it, but for some reason, I can't get this computer to read this disc, and I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's on my end. So at the request of a number of commissioners, I have drafted a resolution to establish and create what I called the Henry County Police Advisory Commission. The way it was drafted originally was very vague, it was very, because I didn't have a lot of details. I've since gained some details from the commissioners, so I'm gonna walk you through the way it would be, the way it would look, and I can put, I can put this screen down, and we can walk through it that way. The, the resolution proposed would first create an entity called the Henry County Police Advisory Commission. I'm gonna, I am going to point out, I'm gonna point out comments I've received, either from commissioners or staff as I go along. Some of them are shown on the, on the version in front of you, some of them are not. The first comment I received from your management's team was that rather than having it be a Henry County Police Advisory Commission, perhaps it should be Henry County Public Safety Advisory Commission, so we can capture all of your public safety functions. And that's, that would certainly include police, fire, animal control, 911, that's it. So it would encapsulate all of the, all of the departments within your jurisdiction that deal with public safety. So it, we would consider everywhere that document says Henry County Police Advisory Commission, to say Henry County Public Service or Public Safety Advisory Commission. The membership would be, would consist of people appointed by this board. I left the number of members blank, because I haven't gotten enough feedback from the board to get a feel for how you would like the feedback to be, and you'll see I've got different colors, you can barely see. I've got some blueprint, I've got some red print, and later you'll see some purple print. So that represents different comments I've received from different commissioners. So one comment that I've actually received from a couple of commissioners is that obviously each commissioner, each member of the Board of Commissioners would appoint a member to the public safety or to the advisory committee. In red, you'll see there are up to nine members would be appointed from community organizations. Now, if I put quotes, then what I did was I quoted exactly what the commissioner said to me, without trying to interpret it or expand on it, because I'm not sure that it's really my place to define some of these terms. I will say that a lot of times where you see these advisory committees, there are members appointed by outside agencies. Sometimes they're appointed by local civic groups, local religious groups, maybe they're appointed by local business groups, or the bar association, or by, by, you know, the judges of the Superior Court, something like that, and, you know, to give a broader-based input into those committees. You do have to be careful, and this was something the chief and the deputy chief said, be careful about how big of a layer you build between police management, the rest of your management, and yourselves. But that is a, I put that option in because that was, I did receive that from one of the commissioners. I didn't get any feedback about terms, but I suggested a term of two years for each member. I called for the ability of all members to be removed by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners, and we made this a volunteer commission. Now, all of this is subject to, to change by the board. I'm gonna flip to the next page, and this is really the important bits. The, we would expect this commission, when it, if and when it is formed and begins to meet, to establish for itself internal governance bylaws. Let's let them decide for themselves how they meet, when they meet, whether they want a different quorum than you would typically have, and things like that. But then we get down to the important bits, which is the purpose and the responsibilities. Now, when I first sent this out to you, that was blank, because I think we all, I can, I can envision a different set of purposes and responsibilities, and each of you can, and again, I didn't think it was my place to tell you what it should look like. So the, this is, these items, one through eight, are all of the comments I've received thus far from commissioners. The first three I've received from multiple commissioners, and that is to review policies and procedures, including standard operating procedures. Number two, to offer recommendations for revisions to those policies and provisions. Number three, to serve as a voice for the community, and again, I put that in quotes because I think we can all have a different, we need to figure out exactly what that means. Next is to serve as a go-to in the case of a crisis. The next section would be to work to support best practices in the provision of police services. I didn't put that in quotes, but that was a direct quote, again, because I'm, I think we could come up with a lot of different definitions for that. To act as an accessible medium to communicate between the public and the police department. Next, to review cases involving questionable actions. Questionable actions involving police officers, I think that would, although I put that in quote, I would recommend that you make that be claims of excessive force or unlawful arrest, or something like that. I think you really should, if you're gonna have this committee have any jurisdiction over those, I think you should narrowly define those. And to report concerns to the Board of Commissioners. The rest of the ordinance, the, about meetings, records, and reporting, those, we wanna ensure that it, they comply with the Georgia Open Meetings Law, we wanna ensure that they comply with the Open Records Law, and we wanna make sure they provide reports to you as needed. You know, they don't need to just exist without communicating with the board. Another recommendation from the management team was that one member of this board serve on that committee to ensure that there's a, a good line of communication between this committee and the Board of Commissioners. So that's what I've prepared for you. I, I think it's important that you hear more from your management team than from me, because, you know, ultimately, what you're doing is you're adding potentially a layer between managing the county and managing the police department, and you're also putting a layer between the police department and the public. And I think that's something, those are two things you really ought to consider if you want that layer, need that layer, and what's the good and bad? And I'm not sure I'm qualified to tell that, but they're here, and they're certainly more qualified than I am to talk about those. So I'm gonna get out of the way, let y'all talk about it, and I'm gonna grab my computer and make notes as we go if we need to make revisions.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Hold your mask.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick, and obviously, the additional information that was added to the resolution was something that we just received prior to the meeting, and so obviously, I would have rather been a little more prepared to offer comments regarding what this looks like. I will say that I certainly believe that citizen input is important in any process, even beyond our police department. In any process, we need citizen input. But I am concerned in terms of creating another board or a committee. The Board of Commissioners is the governing authority for Henry County Government, and as the county manager, my job is to manage those day-to-day operations in terms of what happens across 32 departments that we have. I do believe that we need some type of citizen advisory group, but I do believe that that role should be very specific in terms of what we're asking this group to do. I kinda jotted down a couple of notes based on what I heard Patrick say, and what I think I've heard from the commissioners in terms of their concerns, and definitely want the board to understand that we're not trying to prohibit individuals from offering input in whatever concerns may be. But I think the purpose of any group should be just an advisory role, and they should be providing resources to, in this case, I think PD was the primary concern here, to, to our chief, who will then in return provide that information back to us that we can share with the board. What I don't wanna do is create levels of, in my opinion, just levels of, that you've gotta jump through in terms of getting some, some information to the board. Now, I know the resolution that Mr. Jock Stetter presented included some comments, or at least purposes, as identified by the purposes, as identified by the board members, and I do have some concerns with an advisory group being a part of the standard operating procedures, being a part of how personnel matters may be handled. Those are things that should be handled through the processes that are currently within our PD department, and then if not handled within our PD department, handled at the county management level. So, what I'm asking is that the board allow us an opportunity to review, because I do believe that these advisory committees exist throughout the country, and we want to come back with a recommendation that works for the entire group. This is not a matter of saying, no, we don't wanna do it, but we wanna get it right, and we wanna make sure that we're not creating a board that's not gonna have the functionality that you all are looking for, but I also believe that we need to hear from you all on what your concerns are, so that we can develop this advisory group and be very specific in what their role is going to be. If there is an issue in our police department, that should come through our county management team, and we should be sharing that with the board, if it, if it rises to the board's, board's level. But I ask that you all just trust us in developing what this looks like, and then bringing it back to you all for consideration. I think our chief was very clear in that he said, I wanna hear from the citizens, I wanna hear what those concerns are, but we've gotta get it right. And I don't wanna throw something together tonight without having all of the information that we need. Commissioner Thomas, I know we've talked about it last week in terms of what the expectations are, but I wanna hear from the entire board in terms of what that looks like and how we create when I'm gonna call an advisory committee. And I don't even wanna call it an advisory committee, just an advisory group, because again, I think any recommendations from that group should come through our deputy county manager and/or our chief, so that we can keep the lines of communication open. It's challenging if the chief has to report to the county manager, the deputy county manager, the Board of Commissioners, and now another board. And so I think that's part of what my concerns are. I'll pause for a second, 'cause I know the deputy county manager may have some comments, and then certainly, we'll be open to dialogue with the board.
Thank you, Sherri. Commissioners, I, the word, the levels and hoops kept getting brought up. I look for it as a trust-verified group. I look for a tool we can use. And I mentioned before, or Patrick mentioned before, is that right now, the hot topic is police in our community. However, we have high-risk departments in Henry County in all of our public safety. What is a nine-one-one call is not handled correctly. Whether it is a EMS or fire call is not handled correctly. We handled one today on response times. I think a group like this, or a committee, shall be the, I guess, trust-verified group that will help us make sure we're doing the right things. I am kinda less concerned than anyone else, maybe. I know what they do every day. I know the transparency level they have. We'll be glad to share it, and I'm happy to share it with, with, with the group. However, again, I think it should be all-inclusive of the public safety with priority set of how we deal with that. I think it should be some educational component on who's on there, just when it come up abruptly, or I've been researching this afternoon and found there's various ways to do this through various communities, and there's some great ideas that we've left out of ours that will help transition Henry County into a more open, transparent community. I do disagree with, with the, another reporting agency for the chief. The chief should be part of the committee of this transparency committee to answer questions and provide information. One of the things that's great about committees, we have several boards and committees in Henry County. I will tell you, no disrespect to the committees or, or their being, most are dysfunctional. I, we go to them, there's poor attendance in, in, in most of them. There is a record-keeping component, a reporting component. You guys never get reports, and they're, you know, outside groups. I want this to be right when we do it. This needs to be right to determine who's gonna be the reporting mechanism. I also recommend a board member be a liaison to keep communications with the Board of Commissioners open, not just have a group to go out there to say, we have one. I think if we're, if we, the pleasure of the board is to do this, let's do it right. Let's make it a real good, positive thing for Henry County. Let's move all of our departments forward and, and definitely show our transparency in Henry County. We have a great accredited department. We're gonna make, as Commissioner Holmes said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna have some issues over time. We'll take care of them issues. And it's also, we don't have a problem showing a group or an outside agency that we're taking care of our problems and have recommendations. We do have one thing that, that we've learned. Perception of how we see perception is how the community perceives it, might be different, and having someone else to help tell our story. You know, we welcome that. Again, trust-verified, and I think there's a position, but I think as the county manager expressed, if you give us to the next meeting, so we can put together your recommendation for the board, a good formal, using multiple agencies existing, what's working for agencies, what's not, put that together for the board to have a real document in front of you by the first meeting of the next month.
Okay, I've got a comment. I see Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Barn.
I'm sorry, wait a minute. Wait, 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 we gotta kinda, we gotta go, okay, I said I've got a comment. Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Barn. In, in the times that we're in right now, I think it needs to be clear, 'cause I was one that too spoke about some form of a community involvement group. And what we're talking about is not trying to encourage citizens to run the department, we're trying to establish a partnership. I mean, so that there is, again, communication, education, but also recommendations that the community can get involved in, because I will tell you, as we continue through these, I mean, a lot of the issues that we're experiencing as a community, as a nation, as a state, is not gonna go away anytime soon. And all we're saying, really to emphasize what the chief has recommended, let's find those ways to collaborate with the community. Now, I do agree that we really need to have some more conversation to give the other commissioners an opportunity to give some input into what we're speaking about, but again, what is that connection between the community and our police, so that it, again, will allow us to do a better job of collaboration, is what I'm speaking about. So, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Clemens, then Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Barn.
I'm, I'm confused, because I thought we were talking about an advisory board that would advise the Board of Commissioners, not an advisory board that would oversee our police department, but would just serve as a liaison, liaison with the community. And so I, I do support having some form of a citizen committee that we can bounce things off of, that would be a, a buffer between the community, but, so maybe not tonight, maybe we need to develop it, because I think that what Commissioner Thomas was trying to do is to say, what is this about, this advisory commission is basically reporting to us as a Board of Commissioners and being our liaison as a Board of Commissioners. And only other thing that I had a concern with is that I don't know what they're doing that we shouldn't be doing as commissioners, because all of those things that, when I first got this, the membership, the responsibilities, a purpose and responsibilities wasn't listed, and then Patrick, as you put it on the screen, I'm like, well, as a commissioner, that's my job. That's what I'm supposed to be doing. I'm supposed to be listening to the citizens' complaints and issues with the police department, so if this is gonna be a board, and if the majority's gonna vote for it, I wanna put in there that the commissioners can serve on this, because if the citizens elect me as a commissioner, then that's my responsibility, and that's my job, and I, I personally don't need someone else to be a liaison between me and the citizens of the police department. So, I can support it, I think it's needed. Maybe it needs to be added as an extra layer, as a responsibility of the commissioners. And if we have to have a committee, then I think that the commissioners should be able to serve, because no one is gonna serve the citizens that elected me like I will.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I wanna thank Commissioner Clemens, because one of the things that has been misrepresented here, we are not trying to build a committee, advisory, or board that the chief of police has to report to. Let's kill that now. That is not the purpose of this at all. We're not trying to build any type of board or committee that will have an authority over the function of this Board of Commissioners, or a function over the police department, or any part of public safety. That's not the goal. The whole goal is to look at one thing, the climate of this world, the climate of the United States, the climate of Georgia, even as of last night, have incidents that are happening over and over again, and a lot of times, the public, just like you all are like saying, well, when we're doing this, we're doing that, the public is unsettled, and the public may not feel comfortable coming to a police officer or to you one-on-one to say, this is what's going on, this is how I feel, this is what we need to correct. The whole goal is to have a sounding board here that will have a voice to say, you can come to this board and file any type of concerns that you may have. We will represent those concerns to the Board of Commissioners. There are some people not strong enough to stand up and represent to the Board of Commissioners their concerns. Well, this board will come and stand and say, we're representing constituents on behalf of Johnny Doe, whatever his name is, and this is a concern, and we do support that concern. But this is not to take away any authority, any function that we have in place at this county, not at all. I would not do that, nor would I support anything like that. It's just not feasible to do that. But I do know, as we grow, and as incidents takes place, then we have to find a way for our citizens to have an active voice in what's happening in their county, and this is one way to do it. Now, we heard today where the deputy chief outlined to us their internal controls, they're very elaborate. I spent an hour and a half on a meeting with them, including you all, to learn about their internal controls. But as you hear across this nation, internal controls are not enough. It's even being pushed when there's any type of shooting incident to have an outside agency to review it and give information back to them, the police department and other authorities on their findings. In other words, don't check yourself, give yourself the test, evaluate yourself, and determine whether or not you failed to pass that test. It's being pushed for that. And because there are so much racial tendencies now in this country around us, we've gotta step up and decide, just like you. Maybe a little bit uncomfortable with somebody giving you advice, they're uncomfortable as well. And so I'm gonna continue to champion to say that we must have some type of voice, some type of voice. Now, whether we wanna get fancy and call it a commission, a group, a committee, whatever play on words we choose to put there, it still needs to be there. I have no problem with getting input from this board. When the, when our attorney sent out the information, that was one of the things he asked for, please give me some input, so I can fill this in. That's what we want. When I first met with you guys, that was one of the things we asked for, input from you guys. How should this look? How can we best serve this community? That's what we're after. How do we best serve this community? To reduce and build trust, there is not a trusting relationship now with the police department specifically. I know we're talking about all of them, but with the police department specifically, it's not there. And it is not because our police department's done something wrong. We have accolades that we celebrate that our police department has done. This is not a chastisement of them in any form or fashion, and I want to state that, so it goes on record. We do not have anything here to chastise them about. We're not trying to correct them in a form or fashion. We're trying to be proactive and say, let's have this in place in case of a crisis, because there are some things that are questionable that will come before us, but we'll be prepared to, to address those questionable items, and not wait until it happened and then say, well, I, I thought we had a discussion with Group A, and they understood that. That's what this is about. So, I will say to this group, I have no problem saying, okay, do we need to take some time to add something else to it? I really don't. I don't have a problem with that. I'd simply say I would not let it die, but I have no problem with someone saying, can we have a little bit more time to make this stronger? Fine, we can take the time. But one thing is for sure, we need to put this in place, and I will work hard to try to make sure it comes to be for the citizens of Henry County, 'cause as we grow, they need that voice. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Barn.
Yes. Commissioner Thomas, I appreciate you spearheading this, and unfortunately, I didn't get your phone call late of the day, and I didn't get this email about this thing about three-thirty, and it, when I voted against us acting on it today, it wasn't because of what you were doing, it was because I did not have enough knowledge of what we were doing. And, you know, after listening to our county manager, and assistant county manager, and police chief, and assistant chief, I really wish we would give this a little time to let them get together and come back and make some recommendations. I, I could totally support whatever they bring back, and I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Wilson, any thoughts? I've got one comment, and I see Commissioner Clemens as well. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, any comments?
Yes, ma'am. I would, I'd kind of wanna say in the same words as Commissioner Barn, this is the last minute the resolution brought to us, and I'm not, I'm not against it, by no means, but we've heard from the police department and the county manager and assistant county manager, but Patrick also said that we're looking at a public safety, so that means we got other people involved in this as well, and nine-one-one and fire, and so I'd like to see this come back with recommendations from all of them, and maybe we'll be involved with a workshop to, where we all can put all our inputs together and come up with some recommendations. So, that's my thoughts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Vote on this at a later time.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clemens.
I'd like to see us move forward with this resolution to at least establish and authorize the county manager, deputy county manager, and our police chief, authorizing them to establish this Henry County Police and Advisory Commission as you see fit. Bring it back to us, but today, we need to vote to at least go ahead and establish this advisory commission, and you guys can bring back to us what the duties, responsibilities, and all of that is. We don't have to vote on that part yet, but we need this. I thank Commissioner Thomas for bringing it. We can't wait, and I'm afraid that if we say we don't do anything today, we take no action on it today, then it goes to sleep like so many other things, we'll get pushed back, because we have some other pressing things. But I do wanna see us to go ahead and adopt a resolution to establish a Henry County Police Advisory Commission. Now, we're not saying what it is, but I expect you all to make sure that this is not another layer of government for our police department. I expect to have the chief involved in this, to make sure that it does what the intent is to do, and that is to create a sounding board for the citizens to know that they can make recommendations, report, you know, any disparities or anything to this board, and that this board would report to the commissioners, that they would have no authority over our police department, and that we would have the proper people on the board, whether it's somebody from GBI, or district attorney, judges. I don't think just regular citizens without experience should be on there. So, all of those things you all need to take into account and bring back to, if Commissioner Thomas is okay with it. I think that was your intent, was to have that advisory commission that would report to us and be part of the community.
That is my intent.
Okay. So, I think that we don't need to put it aside. I mean, it's gonna take the majority vote, but I would like to see us still move on something today, authorizing you guys to get together and present something.
Okay, I see Commissioner Holmes.
The intent of this group be just to have a quarterly, quarterly meeting with leadership of public safety, where public safety just come in and, and just update them on, on crime statistics, where we are in the county.
Commissioner Holmes, I think you're exactly right. In my mind, I think, I'll definitely refer to the county manager, but in my mind, for our public safety team, would be just that. I mentioned educate. The first part of any committee, the group, is to go over what Commissioner Thomas and the group went over for an hour and a half the other day, what's in place now, provide documentation, let them understand, or let the group understand how actually procedures are in place, and I guess I put big notes here, I didn't mention earlier, is ask the why. We need someone to ask us why. Why do we do this? Why do we do that? And if there's, if there's places, places we can be better or do better, or maybe it's just a communication issue, we're not explaining what the why is. But the intent, I believe, is to provide statistical data, provide how many use-of-force cases there were, and how much, what's the resolution of them, if there's any in question. That's why I would love to have, uh, put in there one of you guys would be the liaison, 'cause what the board outside and what the board here might be looking for might be different. A, a good liaison would be good to have on that group to help that communication, what we don't have on some other groups. But I think you're, you're exactly right, Commissioner, the vision we have is, is kinda be a partner, is, I guess, I think the word that comes to mind.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, and I'm-
Okay, and I'm hearing the board say that, you know, we're in support of something that gives citizens some level of engagement regarding the police department, and so, I do agree that we need some time, and I think commissioners need to give some input, because Commissioner Thomas is correct, even the county attorney and others did ask for input, but again, I just think that we need to make sure that we've got something that has meaningful results, and will accomplish the goal. I think, to me, the biggest thing we got to think about is to make sure that the board is clear about the roles and responsibilities of what this group will be doing, and that is one thing, obviously, that we need to have more dialogue about. So, Commissioner Clemens?
I still don't want us to miss the purpose of this, is not to really govern our police department, because our police department is doing a good job with governing. I think this is for the citizens, again. This is for the citizens to be able to have someone that is part of the community, that they can call, and that's why I said, I thought that's what the commissioners were doing, but if we need to have a different layer, you know, they still need, I think the purpose is, is that she's trying to create a board that citizens can call, or somebody that will stand in the gap for citizens.
I think you feel that it's really...
Okay, so, yeah, so we want to make sure, so just add, in when you guys are creating it, keep in mind, we don't need somebody to come in and listen to the standards, or how we're doing, that's, you guys are already doing that. We don't need somebody to come in and tell the, you know, they can meet with them quarterly, that can be a part of it, but this is really more for a citizens review board, a citizen sounding board.
And before, let me, if you don't mind, Ms. Matthews, let Commissioner Thomas say, because we are kind of going around in circles, but I think that the key is, is that we, I do agree with the motion, that let's allow more input and conversation, and allow you all to bring back something back to the board regarding this, and it needs to be done soon, but let's talk, let me hear from Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll hear from you county manager, and then we'll open the floor for a motion, and I think I've heard several comments about several thoughts that could be a motion.
So, Commissioner Thomas?
Remember, one of the things we want to do is support our police department, and the other agencies that you all added to this, which I have no problem with, but we want to support them. When you have ambassadors out there that can say, "You know what, I understand the reason why that took place." Maybe the one of the requirements could be that they go through the academy that they talked about. It could very well be, in the documentation, we say, "If you are selected to be on this particular, now we require you to complete this," what'd he said, 11-week course, I think? 11-week course, that may be one of the requirements. Well, what I'm trying to do is put out there, beyond the police, another set of information, people can share information about what is happening, okay? And then, if something does happen, that same set of people can now say, "A, B, C happened, this is what we think, or a good alternative would be to solve this particular problem. This is what we think we can do to help with that." But we're not trying to take any power from anyone, and I think to fail to do that, to fail to put together any type of committee or commission, says to our citizens, their voices are not important, because they see their voices are important. And look at the different marches, I've got two more marches to go to, I think two more speeches to make, and I don't know if that's all. But if not, they're going to continue to come in here, continue to come here without a focus, this group can give them a focus. If the group said, "Let us go work on that, we all want to make sure this happens," and present it, then they have a focus and a reason for the march, and something to accomplish. If not, it's going to keep happening. How much of these marches cost us, every time we have one? How much? And then, we go back and say, "Why we keep doing it?" Because they don't see results. We want to position ourselves to give them some form to give us, because I'm a part of the march, to give us some form of results to what we're asking for, not just saying things are bad. And this does that.
Okay, we're going to hear from our county attorney, county manager, and then we're going to open the floor for a motion.
Chairwood, I've heard a lot of comments this evening, and I know we've had some conversations regarding the creation of committees based on the clusters that we have here within our organization. I think this would probably be a good time for us to kick off our Public Safety Committee, which would consist of members of our board, serving on this committee, talking through some of the issues that we're hearing tonight. I think that's an immediate response to what I think I'm hearing from Commissioner Thomas, in terms of making something happen tonight before we leave here. That's not to negate the fact that this committee may recommend back to the board, that we create this community stakeholder, or community advisory, community board, whatever it's going to be called, but I think the first order of business is, we need to hear from you all in a format, so that we'll know what this needs to look like. I think we all agree that we want to get some citizen involvement in this process, but I also think it's important to hear from you all, because ultimately, and I think Commissioner Clemens said it best, the role of making sure that these things are happening is you all holding the management team accountable, and hearing back from your constituents on what their concerns are. And I think by establishing a public safety committee, with three board members serving on that committee, in conjunction with our deputy county manager, with our fire chief, police chief, EMA, E-911 director, we can outline what those concerns are, and then bring that, as that group can develop whatever this stakeholder or advisory committee will look like. And I think it will serve the same purpose, but we'll at least leave here tonight with some direction. You tell us tonight, this is what we want to do, we get meetings scheduled with you all in the coming days to get this committee moving, and then we're ready to bring a recommendation back to this board in July.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that response. So, now, I'm going to open it up now for a motion, please.
Well, Chair, I can't say all those things you just said in the motion, so let me say it. I'm going to make a motion that we take the recommendation of the county manager to put together a task force, that will formulate and construct what the commission will look like with responsibilities of involving the community in policing activities, and other safety activities of the county, and bring that back to us to in July for a final vote to present to our community.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Commissioner Wilson, any comments?
So, run that motion by me again. We're going to take the county manager's recommendation by putting a public safety committee together to see how this committee needs to look like, and bring back the recommendations in July. Is that what I heard?
Yes, that's pretty close, that's it, yes. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so, we've heard the motion, and we've had a second. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, will you please state your vote?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. County clerk, will you confirm that vote, please?
Commissioner Thomas made a motion to take recommendation of the county manager to put together a task force that will formulate and construct what the commission will look like, and bring that back, bring that recommendation back to the board in July. Clemens seconded it, the motion was unanimous, 600.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you, that concludes all the items under the Board of Commissioners. We're now moving to our public comments section, and this is the time we welcome up our citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions, and so, at this time, again, these are individuals that had to sign up prior to the beginning of the meeting, and at this time now, we'll just look to the county clerk to identify those for public comment.
Chair, there are two people that have signed up for public comment tonight. The first one is Neil Waller, and the second is Carl Swinson.
Okay, so if you will please proceed to the podium, Mr. Waller, or Ms. Waller, we ask that you please come now. Okay, Ms. Waller, on the second call, if you're there, please come forward now. Okay, if we can move to Mr. Swinson.
Thank you.
Folks, this was long-winded. Couple things.
So, Mr. Swinson, if you could just state your name, and then we'll go forward.
Hi, I'm Carl Swinson, out of Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. Okay, first off, this is a knee-jerk reaction, you do realize what you're doing here. You're going to create another layer of bureaucracy to step in and do the job that you're supposed to be doing, and have been charged with doing all along, but maybe you just don't have the time. Look, have you talked to the people, your actual constituents, have you actually talked to them, and not the people that are raving mad about this whole situation? Okay? Because not everybody feels the same way. I guarantee you, not everybody feels the same way. Was it something bad that happened? Sure, something bad happens all the time, to everybody. Okay, that's all I'm going to say about that, but another layer of bureaucracy, come on, you've got to come up with something better than that. All you're doing is spending county money, one way or another, spending county money. And speaking of which, the county's been delphi-ed again. It's been delphi-ed with this wonderful boondoggle up there at Fountain Road. I can't believe that you keep telling us that it's inevitable, we're going to be high-density, it's inevitable, we're going to be high-density, you've got to just get used to it. No, we don't have to get used to it. We hire you guys to be standing in the breach, because our county here was never a high-density county, was never meant to be a high-density county, and yet, you are hell-bent on making it that way. That's all I see, is high-density applications being put through here. If they knew that we weren't a high-density county, and we weren't soliciting for high-density development, they probably wouldn't be making these offers to bring in high-density housing. It's not inevitable. All of you, all of you, were charged with protecting the county, protecting the flavor of the county, and you're doing just the opposite. Why? Because you think it's inevitable. It's not inevitable. All you're doing is playing right into the hands of the America 2050 crowd. Yeah, go ahead and look at that site, they got it all planned for you, and you're part of it right now, you really are. The Atlanta Regional Commission? Oh, yeah, that's going to be the new government. You're right there, right there with it, and they're going to do a lot of things that you're going to be really upset with, when it comes down to it, but you're not going to be around then, you're just laying the groundwork for it. But what it's going to be, is going to be pods, I think it's either 11 or 13, I forget where they're at now, regions, that's going to be your government, that's going to be what's controlling the entire United States, and beyond. So, if you're happy with that, changing our form of government, and that's what you're doing, keep in mind that there's a word for changing our form of government, and each and every one of you, by virtue of you being involved with the Atlanta Regional Commission, are doing just that. Be careful, be careful, because the people do see what's going on, they will stand up, and they will stand up en masse, in a way that's not going to be happy for, not going to be happy for everybody. But we've got to, we've got to bring back this country, bring back the constitutional republic. You may think it's something that it's not, but what it is, is the thing that brought us to this point, where we can prosper, but all that prosperity is going down the tubes, because some people just can't handle it. But prosperity is what we work for, what we build our lives upon, what we leave to our children as a legacy. What are you going to leave as a legacy? A better place? Think about that. Is Henry County going to be a better place, or is it going to be worse off for what you've done? Anyway, y'all have a great evening tonight.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for our public comment? Well, that concludes our public comments section, and we say, thank you for those that did speak this evening. And so, at this time now, we'll move into the approval of our amendments for the April 7th regular Board of Commissioners meetings. If there were any revisions or changes, we now ask for a motion for approval. We have heard Commissioner Thomas, and saw Commissioner Barm for a motion, and second, any further discussions or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Commissioner Wilson, will you please state your vote for the approval of the amendments?
In favor.
Okay, so that was unanimous. Regarding our commissioner comments, are there any commissioner comments at this time?
I'm sure.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and staying with us, and thank those who are watching us, as we plow through what's happening around our country, and try to make the best decisions for the people here in Henry County. Pray for us, pray for us, because we're doing our best to make sure we represent your concerns, keep you safe, and hopefully, get the county where we're backing on the strong economically, and to draw more confidence here to make us better. In the process, we're going to do our best to educate you. On Thursday night, I will be having a Facebook Live meeting with our deputy, I always say deputy first, our chief of police, and deputy chief of police, to ask some hard questions about policing in Henry County. Not that we have any grave concerns, but we want to make sure that we talk to you ahead of time, so you know what to expect, and how you can help us be greater than where we are right now, when it comes down to community policing, and being a greater community. Thank you again, as we travel through these troubled times, let's remember one thing, God is greater than all, and He loves us all, and we need to love each other. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Any other commissioner before I have a brief comment? I do want to say thank you to all of those who participated in protests and walks here regarding all of the concerns that we've had in our nation, and I just appreciate the peacefulness by which it is done. There's been really great organized times that people have come together to pray, and to speak, and to express themselves, and I just want to say thank you, Henry County, for at least standing for your thoughts and your voices, but at the same time, doing it in a peaceful manner. So, again, we say thank you for that. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Okay, so regarding upcoming meetings and events, on June 23rd at 5:30 PM, we do have a call Board of Commissioners meeting, and I see the county manager raising her hand with that.
Chairwood, I've received notification that we no longer need that meeting, that was going to be for P and Z items, but that meeting can be removed from the calendar.
Okay, so, we are removing the call meeting on the Board of Commissioners, so thank you for June 23rd at 5:30, so no meeting.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then, Chairwood, I do want to remind the board that we do have a call meeting with all four cities on June 30th at 6:00 PM, regarding T-SLOSS, specifically, the intergovernmental agreement, and the transportation project list. The notifications did go out to the cities, they were hand-delivered this morning, or this afternoon to all of the cities, but that meeting has been scheduled for June 30th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, and it's going to be here in the community room?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, and then, on, okay, so we, the cancellation of the June 23rd call meeting, then we will have a joint meeting with the county and the cities on June 30th at 6:00 PM, and it is a call meeting regarding the T-SLOSS referendum. And then, on July the 7th, we have our regular 9 o'clock Board of Commissioners meeting, and then on July the 21st at 6:30 PM, we have a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So, at this time now, if there's nothing else for the good of the group, we'll now accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. So, move. I heard Commissioner Holmes, saw Commissioner Thomas, any further comments? All in favor. Commissioner Wilson, will you state your vote, please?
I'm in favor.
All right, thank you. All right, everyone, have a good night, and thank you all for participating today.